Good evening, everybody. This is the City of Deseret Hot Springs Council Meeting. This is our presentation period. Man, we got some voice tonight, don't we? We have our first presentation tonight is by the, excuse me, the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Presentation. And is our General Manager here tonight? Our appointee, Gary Gardner, for the City Desert Hot Springs. Has he been behaving?
He's been doing a great job. So, yes, he's been behaving quite well.
Check in on my council members' appointments to make sure. I just have to make sure you're being, oh, no, no, that was, that's for bugs. That's for bugs.
No, we have a great board and council member Gardner has added to that. So, it's been a pleasure to have him on board and get to know him. And he's been doing a great job for the city and for our district as well.
Great.
All right. Tonight I'm going to be giving the council staff, and it's my pleasure to be here to talk about our programs and how we, what we do to protect public health here in the Coachella Valley. We've had quite a busy year this year, as you probably know from the media, if not by contact to the city, on the information that we've had regarding West Nile and St. Louis and other challenges that we've had from vectors that are here in the valley. So, I'll be talking about our virus season, as well as a new mosquito that's been spreading across California and since 2016 has been here in the Coachella Valley. And then also look, share with you ways the district will be looking into the future and how we can partner with cities, just like as Desert Hot Springs, to kind of be force multipliers and work together to protect public health. I just kind of gave my overview there. And so, just a reminder how we do, how, not just our district, but public health agencies, vector control districts across the state, protect public health of Californians. It's through integrated vector management or integrated pest management, maybe more familiar with. We have several components. One really not more important than the other, but they all work in concert to deliver our mission, which is protecting public health from mosquitoes and vector-borne disease. If you look at that, if you can see that graphic, and I think, do you have that, the diaphragm there? Just, yeah, okay. Vector surveillance and disease surveillance. The district puts out traps all across the valley, from Desert Hot Springs to the North Salt and Sea State Park, trapping mosquitoes on a weekly basis and taking those mosquitoes back to our district headquarters, where we test them on a weekly basis for viruses. We test for three viruses that we can find and do find here in the Coachella Valley. That's West Nile Virus, St. Louis Encephalitis, and Western Equine Encephalitis. We also send some of our mosquitoes, the invasive ones, to the state labs to test for other types of viruses that we don't have here currently. We do quality control and research. We work with the UC Davis, UC Riverside, as well as other USDA to do research focused on programs in our valley to enhance our programs. And we also have biologists ranging from PhDs to degrees in science that routinely evaluate our programs. We do vector control. Vector control comes in three forms. Physical control, we manipulate the environment to make it less hospitable for mosquitoes. We do chemical control, focused primarily on the larval stage, because that's the most effective. And then also biological control. We use mosquito fish primarily to stock into sources around the valley that hold water that we can use those fish to eat, mosquito larvae. And then the last piece of that is community outreach and community partnerships, working together, informing the public. You know, we have close to 60 members on staff, but we can't be everywhere. And so, we have to educate the public on what they can do on their property to rid mosquitoes, as well as protect themselves, and also work with our community partners, such as cities, HOAs, other government agencies, and other organizations to, again, create a coalition of supporters of reducing the public health threat from mosquitoes. So, this year in West Nile and St. Louis Encephalitis, again, those are the two primary viruses that are transmitted from two mosquitoes that we have here in the valley. One that you find primarily in the eastern valley. So, if you look at this map here, it's a heat map, and it shows risk. This was from several weeks ago, but it's indicative to how our summer and how our season has been. Virus season in the valley usually from March, April, up until November. And then the conditions and the environment primarily change where a virus doesn't continue to be transmitted. But we typically have a lot of virus activity there. You can see near the Salt and Sea. The reason is, we have a good population of mosquitoes, but we all have a lot of birds. And West Nile and St. Louis Encephalitis is the natural cycles between birds and mosquitoes. Humans get infected as an accident, basically an accident. We're a dead-end host. We can't pass that virus on. But this year, which is, which is not typical till most years, we had virus throughout the valley. So, it kept us very busy in multiple places, doing enhanced surveillance, doing control, and also getting the information out to the public. But the hottest area was in Palm Springs as well, in our urban areas. We had a lot of transmission throughout the summer. Desert Hot Springs, though, escaped that this year. So, you guys were, doesn't mean to have mosquitoes, you just didn't have any virus detected. So, if you can look at our, the numbers there at the bottom, for example, in 2018, we had a little over 100 of mosquito samples positive for virus. This year, we had well over 600. This was something not only for us, but in other parts of the state had quite a significant year for these two viruses. And when I talk about mosquito samples, that's collections of mosquitoes that were testing in the lab and being positive for these viruses. What creates this risk? You have to have all these things come into place in space and time. You have to have the mosquito, which is the vector. Vectors in our profession is the arthropod that can transmit the virus to something else. You have the reservoir, in this case, a West Nile Virus, a St. Louis Encephalitis. It's a bird. They carry that. And then you have the virus or the pathogen. You put those all in the same space. You have the right weather conditions. You have all these things. And then you have local transmission. And so, in Palm Springs and the shoreline area, this was really coming together for this cycle to happen. So, what do we do to lower risk? We enhance surveillance. We have a really, really well-adapted surveillance program. We have lots of traps out there, and we intensify those traps to really map where the virus is moving. We do enhanced control. So, we're not only controlling the mosquitoes that are in the water. So, if you can see their lifecycle there, part of their lifecycle, as most people know, is in the water. So, we focus control in those areas. But then also, when we have a lot of virus activity, based on our response plan, we do adult control, which can come from trucks applying a public health pesticide to control the adults that do have the virus, or we can use helicopters or planes. And then we inform. We strategically reach out to those communities with the highest risks to get to those residents to make sure, one, they can eliminate mosquito sources on their property, but they also can put on the mosquito repellent and make sure that their properties are sealed up tight from these mosquitoes potentially coming in their house and biting them. What contributes to all this? In the desert, of all places, you would think, so many mosquitoes and viruses, we have irrigation. And that's one of the focuses for our district in the coming years, is to how we can work with cities and with the county to get better irrigation practice, because that water that doesn't go into the turf or the soil goes down the street, as I'm sure you've seen somewhere in the valley. That water then goes to those curbside catch basins, and that is where many of the mosquitoes that we've had prior to this invasive mosquito, that's where they come from. And so, we spend a lot of time, 10,000-plus, I think, sources across the valley devoted to catch basins and dry wells, that we have to at some, at some level, go around and check those periodically throughout the year. And we can eliminate those or mitigate those by reducing the amount of water that's running down the street. So, what about Desert Hot Springs? Desert Hot Springs, I think because of the, where you're situated on the side of the hill, have a lot of water that runs down. But you do have, the biggest sources that we have in Desert Hot Springs are neglected pools or dry pools. And so, we can see in the picture there are two pools from Desert Hot Springs area. One that's been, looks like pretty well abandoned for quite a while, but it'll catch rainwater. And we do get rain events, and those can quickly fill up those dry pools. We have across the valley a little over 1,000 dry pools. And so, we have to keep those on our database, so that when we do have significant rain events, we have to send technicians back into the field to check those as best we can. And then you have some, when you have like one in the lower left, maybe a foreclosure, and then that pool can be full of water and can be producing thousands of mosquitoes if it's not checked. So, that's the West Nile Virus picture. From invasive eighties, this is another mosquito that's crept its way through the valley since 2016. We have it in all nine cities at some level. It's not wall-to-wall, but it's in neighborhoods. And it's an invasive mosquito, meaning that it doesn't belong here. This has originated from Africa, but it's traveled worldwide primarily because of its life history, which I'll give you a few information about. We detected it in 2016, and it's, we've detected it now in most places of the valley, from Mecca to Desert Hot Springs. Unlike our other urban mosquitoes, it's a mammal biter. So, before I was talking about birds and mosquitoes, this one's a person mosquito biter. So, it likes to bite you, likes to bite your animals, and it can also transmit other viruses that we don't have transmitted here in California, fortunately. People know it because they get bitten quite severely. They walk in your backyard, get some bites around your ankles. It likes the ankles for some reason. That's kind of when people are going to say, hey, this is not the usual mosquito that I'm used to. And one of the things that makes it very successful is it's a container breeder. It lays eggs in containers that can be dry for up to six months or more, so people can take their containers and move this mosquito around quite easily. And that's one reason why it's moved around the globe. So, you can see in that picture, this is its lifecycle. Female mosquito will find a container in somebody's backyard. Could be a cup, could be a bottle cap, could be at the bottom of a recycle bin. She'll lay her eggs on the side of that container. Those eggs will hatch, larvae, pupae, and then you have adults coming out potentially biting you. And so, what's in Desert Hot Springs, this is that road, that main road you can see is Mission Lakes Boulevard. We have found Aedes Aegypti in that area. So, we've been working in that area, setting additional traps, and then sending technicians. It's quite time-intensive, and that's why I put that picture of lots of clocks. Before, we had these street-side catch basins as sources, which, again, is a lot. But now, every single household is a potential mosquito source because of the habits of this mosquito that can do quite well in a backyard in a very small amount of water. So, we really have to shift, it's not just what the district can do, it's but what the public needs to do on their own property to really make an impact as big as we can with this mosquito. So, what people have to do, in addition to what we're doing, is really, and the one reason why, I'll backtrack a little bit, this mosquito is the primary vector of dengue, chikungunya, Zika, which was in the press several years ago, making a worldwide impact. This is, it's natural viruses that it transmits. Fortunately for California, we haven't had local transmission of this, but it happens. It's happened in Florida, happens in Mexico, South America, Asia. And that next bullet point there is travelers beware. This is how we're trying to, every year, this virus, these viruses do come to California. It's because people travel abroad and bring them back in their bloodstream. And you have, now that you have the vector, and you have people bringing back those viruses, you have the potential for local transmission. And that's not just what our district is trying to prevent, but districts around California to prevent that from happening. And what's the solution for this is dumping and draining containers. It's a container breeder. So, you'd be surprised how much stuff people have in their backyard that can hold water, from saucers at the base of a plant to discarded tires, bird baths, buckets, you name it. If it holds water, it's a potential mosquito source, and people have to get rid of those things as best they can. So, with all this work to do, one of the parts of our district, we have a strategic plan. We create those every three years, and we strategically go to the future on what we can do to better protect public health. One of those pieces in the next several years is to work with public works departments in the cities to look at, city owns, city has your own sources. And so, what we want to do with the cities in particular is to work collaboratively to identify the sources that are the worst, I guess, the headache for us, and work with the city to see how we can manage those sources to better, to eliminate the mosquito breeding in them. And this can be as simple when it comes to catch basins, for example, timely cleaning of them. Not all catch basins breed mosquitoes, but the ones that do, if they're clean, it's better for us, and they can breed less mosquitoes. So, we're looking to work with the cities, kind of get ahold of the city sources, work with the cities to identify what they are and what we can do to minimize it, then kind of drill down the bullseye to the homeowner associations, neighborhoods that are, again, are problematic because of irrigation practices primarily, and then finally, the individual. And that's, again, to be proactive, to try to start to be ahead of the game here in limiting some of this water that's out there producing the mosquitoes. So, when it comes to Desert Hot Springs, what's a proactive management approach? Like I said, within our database, we can classify sources by kind of the property ownership. So, in our database, we have a GIS system that tracks all these mosquito sources. We input all the information in there. And for DHS, we have just a little over 20 sites that are problem mosquito sources. So, what we would like to do in the coming months is to work in conjunction with your public works department, take a look at these sites, and look if there's anything we can do to limit water input into these sources, and also how we can manage them so that we can make them less of a mosquito breeder. So, for example, this is one of the sites that is common. This is a Desert Hot Springs, a street-side catch basin. Again, this is one that can catch water. When you look down, that's a different picture of a catch basin, but if you look down inside there, they're designed to handle storm water runoff, not designed to handle runoff. And so, they can just hold a little bit of water in the bottom, and that's all it takes for these mosquitoes to reproduce. And clean those out on a routine basis can really diminish that breeding potential. So, for us, for us, the plan is to work with Desert Hot Springs, as well as with other cities over the course of the next year, to really develop best management plans for these sites, both short-term, what can we do now, and what maybe can we plan long-term? Because a lot of this takes money. And how can we plan for the future in minimizing these sites? One of the items that's on the docket tonight for the business is partnering with us, our warrant, we have a blanket warrant, that it's not the silver bullet, but allows us to get into properties to abate standing water sources in backyards, especially when we have lots of virus activity. And that'll be up later, and I'll be here to answer any questions you may have. So, again, that would be working with code enforcement, and code enforcement staff to really be force multipliers, not only us working together, but with the city to make a biggest impact we can on protecting public health here in Desert Hot Springs. Last thing I'll say, we have a new website, so check it out. We had a very dark-looking website for many, many years, had lots of good information, but this is our new website. It's live. You can go there, the public can go there and issue a service request, and also call the district. So, if people of Desert Hot Springs need service, have questions about mosquitoes, red and imported fire ants, flies, they're having a problem with roof rats, and they need some assistance and what to do about it, they can call the district, create a service request, call us at that number Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30, and a technician will come out and work with you to help you out. With that, I can take any questions.
Well, thank you for coming out today. It's always informational, a lot of information is informative for us to be able to answer these questions to our residents. A lot of people don't realize, we all pay taxes, and part of our taxes goes to these services that your board provides. So, utilize those services if you can. I work outside of the city limits, and our golf course utilizes your services for the red ants. They became a problem on our golf course. In over a two-year period, you've almost eradicated them and done a fantastic job. So, any questions from anyone on the diaphragm here? Gary, would you like to add anything? Ken, go ahead first.
I'm glad you're going to stay for the warrant, because I have questions.
Okay, great. All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next presentation tonight is going to be Cabot's Pueblo Museum, and Irene Rodriguez is going to give that. And I know we have a member on your board too, Luke Rainey, right? Is he behaving?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure too.
Perfect attendance.
Gold star.
Okay. The top one, you have to remind me. Oh, okay. So, thank you for this opportunity. I haven't been in a while for the city council. So, I wanted to give you sort of what has happened since the fiscal year 2017. That's when I really started for a whole year at Cabot's. I started in 2015, the middle of fiscal year 2016. So, the numbers are a little different, and I don't want to compare apples to oranges. So, I wanted to start with a really clean slate on that. So, Cabot's Pueblo Museum, as you know, this is a wonderful, unique, original pueblo that we have in our city and actually in our Coachella Valley. So, you see the numbers of visitation has increased every year that we've done, especially last year, we increased 17% on that. So, I'm a little cautious for this year, so I don't know if it's because of the weather. It was already wet season, so many things were closed throughout the valley, and they actually came in. Also, because of Desert X, we had two, we had one of the installation just down the street. So, I know that also gathered, brought more individuals and visitors to our museum. So, I'm keeping a close look at that. But even today, I was comparing visitation numbers from July to October of 2018 and this year. So, we're up by 11% on this. And that's because for the summer, we opened one extra day. We usually used to close, be open from Wednesday through Saturday. Now, we're open from Tuesday through Saturday during the summer hours. So, that was really helped us. Again, our museum tours have been, I can, increasing as you can see throughout the whole years on it. So, last year, we hit the 9,000 mark that people actually tour. And a retro from people who are attending, sort of visiting the grounds and also taking the tour has also changed. So, more visitors are really taking advantage of our tours and learning more about the city of Desert Hot Springs and what Cabot Yorxa did for the city and for the valley. So, our membership, another way that we actually earn some revenue for is our membership. So, it really increased in 2017. I have a deal through Groupon, so that helped us increase our membership and our group tours as well. We actually found a slight decrease this last year. So, we have played some strategies for this year where we really, our staff and the volunteers are promoting our membership. And another thing that we're doing is, if you decide to become a member that day, then we'll reduce it by your admission price that you paid. So, that also encourages residents to become members for that. And we're trying to find different benefits for them to really become members. So, last year, we actually were able to do behind-the-scenes for our members, and they loved it. We only had 40 spots, and we have a little over, but we have like 230 members. And so, we had this in April, and 35 people of our members came, and we did behind-the-scenes type of tour, things that are not accessible to the public, something unique like that. We're in the process of trying to develop through, with my team. And another way to increase it is, what other ways could we really tour? As you may know, the rooms of the pueblo are really small, and we only take 14 at a time. So, how could we use the ground? So, we're looking how we could really do a garden tour on that. So, be working with some of my staff and the volunteers to really look at that and also really diversifies our revenue from our end of tours. So, that'll take staff and volunteers who love, who love the gardens, because we get a lot of questions from our botanical, people who are interested, what plan is this, what tree is this? So, hopefully, that's a really nice project that will get started. So, the collection is also owned by the city of Desert Hot Springs. So, this here is, we had a storage unit that we vacated, and we brought the collection into the onsite. On that, we still need to sift through that collection on that. So, we need to decide different things, or I will, for some recommendations, because we're only the caretakers. So, we need to decide and the parameters of what is the value of this item artifact that increases or acts impact to our visitors, our members, the story of Cabot, even our mission. So, different things, you know? There's an old vacuum cleaner. I don't think that a vacuum cleaner was used at the pueblo. So, what, how it is? This is, there's this sign there that we have, this is Desert Hot Springs, it's sunrise service on Miracle Hill. Now, we don't know if that was actually held there or not, but it's a really unique piece. But does it really belong to us? Or does it belong, for instance, something that the historic society could have, because it represents the city as a whole? Even though in the bottom, it has the signature, it looks like it's Cabot, but that's not exactly his signature. He has a very distinct signature, so that's what we know. So, we'll be sifting through all these boxes that we have to determine what is that we keep, what is it that we perhaps give it to another organization, or how do we de-access it? And then creating that policy and deciding. And I'll walk through all this process with everybody involved, so we could actually make a good decision that's best for the museum and for the city and for the collection This is one of the programs that we have that I was able to brand it and bring it together as one unit, the Culture Weekends. And this is a fundraiser for the foundation. We received 25% of the sales of the artists. So, it's bringing artists from Oaxaca in January, artists from Chihuahua in February, and the Hopis coming in in March. So, there you see our, sort of our visitation that has increased over the years. Some of our sales has gone down. Again, in January, it was really cold, and it was really raining. And so, when we had our weekend, that was one of the first sunny, wonderful weekends. So, people might have not come in for that reason, and then other things, because it was outside on it. And this is the items that you see, the images are from the Oaxaca artists. And then this is one of our most popular ones, is the Mata Ortiz pottery, which we actually are able to fire two pots a day, depending on the weather. And we auctioned that different, that pot there. And you can see the whole process, a little bit of there. And sometimes the pots don't make it. You could hear the, it sounds like a popcorn. It pops and it breaks. And so, you never know what the outcome is going to be out. And then there's one of our Hopi artists demonstrating the whole carving of the, of the kashina dolls and one of the pieces there. And one of my program that is growing is called Making a Difference outreach program. We go to second, it's a second grader curriculum. So, it's a three-visit. We go to the classroom, they come to the museum, and then we have a family day or night with them as well, to really include not only the student, but also the families. So, we started with one school in 2017. For the school year of 2018 and 19, we went to five schools. For this year, we are at 12 elementary schools within the Palm Springs Unified. So, our priority is always covering Desert Hot Springs, the five different schools. And then we branch out to Catedral City and Palm Springs for this year. And we see funding from the Berger Foundation the first year, and we, this is our second year of funding with the Anderson Schuldens Foundation. And the Palm Springs Unified School District also gives us funding to provide this opportunity for their second graders. So, we have a couple of community programs. Every April, we celebrate Earth Day on it, so we do different activities. We collaborate with other individuals to bring in what Earth Day means to the community, and especially Earth Day for Cabot Yorxa, being that the pueblo has reused things from the landscape, from using the telephone poles, from old wagon boards, from the class plane. So, something that we could always reuse and not throw away. And then, this is the first year that we celebrated summer, because we want to embrace summer. And so, we did a small event, and it's about 30 people attended. And then a couple of weeks, we had Day of the Dead, which was well-attended on that. And so, we collaborate with the CV Days of los Muertos, with different organizations and museums from throughout the valley also participate. And it culminates on, remember, on City of Coachella during the 5K Ramo de los Muertos. And then I've been also busy working under the Center for Nonprofit Advancement in their fast pitch competition. So, since February, I've been attending two workshops a month, learning everything from doing video ads for the Facebook, learning how to use social media, develop a social media plan, our marketing plan, and most important, how do we collect those stories that people are impacted by Cabot Yorxa? So, we could share it with our visitors, with potential donors and funders on it. And then we had, then developing a three-minute pitch, which is a competition. First prize wins $20,000. Second prize is $15,000, and the audience is 10,000. So, it's November the 20th. If you're able to attend, please do so. And it's on November the 20th. So, and I want to share with you my pitch. You guys ready? So, there it goes. It's very important that I practice. I'm trying every opportunity to practice where I go. Okay? So, "Stay back in time into a place so filled with art, history, and lore that you're immediately transported to a bygone era. Imagine entering someone's home, a pueblo, so original and unique that you could almost hear the owner's voice from around the corner. This is Cabot Yorxa's personal home." This is Cabot Yorxa's personal home, known today as Cabot's Pueblo Museum. Possibility, opportunity, curiosity. These words embody Cabot's spirit. He ventured to Alaska in 1900. He became a homesteader in 1913 in what we know as Desert Hot Springs. And in 1941, returned to the area. And with his resourcefulness, love of nature, generosity, built his home in the desert hills using materials from the landscape, homemade adobe bricks, telephone poles, railroad cross ties. He connected with his community. He actively participated in building the infrastructure of Desert Hot Springs, bringing in the streetlights, the fire department, post office, and the library. Cabot was a passionate advocate for Native Americans. He rediscovered the mineral hot springs and ultimately opened his pueblo to visitors, displaying his many collectible items gathered during his travels. Cabot's Pueblo Museum is an artistic environment celebrating the creative spirit. More than 1,000 local students tour each year, and 18,000 visitors from around the world visit the grounds. The highlight of every second grader is the field trip to the museum. They arrive excited, they interact, and then make their own artwork. After the tour, I heard Brian say, "I was surprised. I've never been in a museum." Sonia, "I felt like I was in history." And Jocelyn, "Cabot's Pueblo Museum is the best place ever." Cabot dared to dream big and believe deeply in giving back to his community. Join us in making Cabot's big dream grow and thrive for generations to come. Today, I'm asking for $35,000 to grow our school outreach program from eight to 12, and eventually to 16 elementary schools. With your involvement, you and Cabot will inspire dreamers of all ages to be curious, see possibilities, and create opportunities for themselves and our community. Thank you. Any questions? Any comments?
Any questions?
You have me sold. I've got my checkbook, so... No, seriously, Ms. Rodriguez, that was an outstanding pitch. And I wish you well in that.
Thank you.
The museum is definitely the crown jewel of the city. And thank you for everything you do up there. I spend way too much time and way too much money up there.
Thank you. We love our job.
November 20th.
November 20th until the 5th. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Karen. All right, next two items, I'm going to come down to the dais there, or the podium.
Our next item on the agenda is the service recognition presented to former Planning Commissioner Scott Delatorre. Could you join me up here? Scott served on our planning commission for four years, from 2016 to 2019. And the mayor of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs would like to honor him and thank him for his service here. He had to resign recently for family issues, but we always like to recognize our planning commissioners and commissioners of the hot springs because they do it at basically nothing, and they do it for the service of their community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sonia. It's been a pleasure to serve the City of Desert Hot Springs for the last four years. We had a lot of agenda items over the last four years. We approved many cultivation facilities that came to the city and are going to help the city financially, and I'm proud to be a part of that. I see the city going in great strides with the management of Chuck Maynard and the great city council that we have here. So bravo to Desert Hot Springs. Vision 2025 is a better place to live. And I'm proud to be a part of that for the last four years. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, Scott, could you hold on one second? I just, you were my appointee to the planning commission. I just wanted to tell you that you can look around the city and see where your involvement, your attention to detail made a big difference in a lot of the projects that went in. So thank you. Four years is a long time to do that, and I really appreciate your service on the commission.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition of the lead. This is our group two. We did this a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to do it again. I'm going to invite Pam Yusup, who is our human resources director, to talk to you about the next group of people and how they did a great job.
Well, at the last city council meeting, we introduced group one of our lead program, which is Leadership, Education, Action, and Development. And tonight, we are going to introduce our group two that went through the program recently. So I'm going to go ahead and call up your names, and when your name is called, come on up and get your certificate. Do you want me to call by name? Okay, Anna Morales is the leader of the group. Monica Guerra. Viviana Gonzalez Osorio. Rami Bashara. Craig Barnes. Richard Min. Clarissa Vera. Tyler Messer. Madison Phillips. And Ken Tally, who's not here tonight.
Squeeze in everybody. If you'd like to stay here, we have one more announcement.
As part of the lead team, we would also like to recognize Dana Johnson, who's the director of Food Now, and also Marjorie Dennis, who's a program organizer, and also the wonderful Denise Cameron. We would also like to recognize Mary Robles, who is one of the liaisons of the community services for the children, who also helped out redistribute all the backpacks to one of the schools.
So explain a little bit about what they did to, you went out to their program and helped them. Explain a little bit about that.
So we got in contact with Dana Johnson, and we heard about this lovely program backpack feeding for the children. And at first, it touched our hearts, knowing that as a group, as a city, we can make a difference and we can contribute. One of the biggest, our biggest goal of this project was to spread the word. And for everybody in the community, hopefully, they can reach out and help you. If it's not by money, help you with your help volunteering, which is the most important part of this program. Marjorie is awesome. She has control of the whole program. Everybody is running around like crazy, and she has control. Denise, she is incredible. She knows exactly what goes where. You will be lost. She will let you know, this is the right packages. This is what goes on the backpacks. You need more, I will be back, I will get more. You can count on them. And Mary Robles, one of the school's liaisons. Just recently, two weeks ago, we had a meeting where four of the community liaisons went and gave their quotes and basically their experience regarding the program. Not to lie, we were about to cry when we heard their experience and their quotes about the program. And we are just very grateful that they take their time redistributing all of these backpacks. And sometimes they don't even get paid for it. They do it out of their own hearts. And I believe the recognition of the city, city council, mayor is the least that we can do.
Have you guys come on up?
Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Anytime you want to come back.
Thank you. We'll be in recess till 6:00.
Thank you. I'm sorry. 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 Can we get the city council back to the dais so we can start it? I think so.
The city council, the city council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for November 5, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Present. Present.
Came in from Mariposa County out of Arizona. But if the mosquito counts were low, was it's doable, it's possible, we're in the middle of the desert, we can't do it here, we can't do it anywhere. That would reduce that threat to public health. And anyway, that's all I'm going to say because everything else is negative, we'll keep it positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Dana Johnson followed by Eddie Johnson, and they're not brothers. Well, then again, Danny, would you like Eddie as your brother?
Yeah. My name is Dana Johnson, I'm a resident here at Desert Hot Springs, also the executive director for food now. And I just want to take a couple of minutes here to thank the city. I cannot tell you how it warms my heart to see this response that we get when we have a fundraising event like the Chili Cook-Off. Every single council member stepped up, every, the staff has stepped up, the city itself has stepped up. It was a fantastic, we have a fundraising event for people at home that don't know, our Chili Cook-Off in its 10th year. We had it at the Palm Springs Air Museum last Friday night. And it was, we had about over 200 guests arrive, we had about 16 chefs, we had the Smooth Brothers playing, we had Brian Gallo as our emcee, and we raised about $50,000.
Awesome.
So that, that just, that will go so far to help Food Now. Food Now is the largest food pantry in Coachella Valley, and we serve about 300, 325 families every week. In addition to that, I just want to thank the lead team, the City of Desert Hot Springs lead team, because they came and they asked, "How can we help?" And I just let them know about our Children's Backpack Feeding Program. One of the programs we have at Food Now is we identify through the help of like, people like Maria here, or Mary, excuse me, Mary. We're in every elementary school in Desert Hot Springs, and there's a need for children that go home and, we help them out when, when they go home and they may be food insecure at home. And so, through the lead team, they came and asked, "How can we help?" I told them about the Children's Backpack Feeding Program, and the lead team said, they, they came in with resources, they came in with people, they came in with food, they helped stuff the backpacks. And so, I just, I just, I'm overwhelmed with gratitude about how this city helps in every way. I'm overwhelmed with gratitude about how the schools step up, about how the city steps up. So I just wanted to come up here and say, "Thank you all for the support that you give Food Now, so that we can continue to help this city grow." All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dana, for everything you do for that organization.
Thank you.
Eddie Johnson followed by Sam Messler.
Yes, my name is Eddie Johnson, a Veterans Park caretaker, and don't have my hat on, I was out in Coachella and Indian talking combat and students. Anyway, I want to remark about the veteran banners that we have up on Pearson, those are awesome, those are great. Took a while to get them up, I'm very happy and proud and honored that Desert Hot Springs is honoring veterans like myself up there. Those are just beautiful, it adds a lot to this town, and that's how patriotic we are. Plus, the Veterans Park is looking great again, green, and getting ready for this weekend coming up. So thank you again for the veteran banners, appreciate it.
Thank you, Eddie. Sam Messler followed by Jay Cooley.
Mayor Mattis, city council members, city manager Maynard, city staff, Sam Xenia Messler from Desert Hot Springs, and I'm very excited because this is going to be our third annual Desert Hot Springs Pride Festival on November 16th. I invite everybody to come. It's going to be at Cabot's Publikum Museum. We absolutely love Irene Rodriguez, so keep her. Thanks to each and everyone who's had a hand on improving all the permits, including Lynn Paul, another one you could keep, she's been terrific. This is going to be our largest festival. The first year in 2017, we had 25 booths. Last year was 40 booths. This year, as of this moment, I have 49 booths with one left in case anyone wants to take it. Just let me know. We also have a kid zone, so that's the first. So we'll have some games and candy and good stuff for the kids. And we also have two radio stations to do live broadcasts, right there, K-Gay Radio 106.5 and Channel Q 103.1. So it's going to be exciting, please, please, please come. We have three food booths, and we also have a great stage, by the way, and Councilman Betts, thank you very much for suggesting that. We had a test, a trial run, I should say, with Scott and James from Public Works over at Cabot's. They didn't think that they could get it straight back and forth, back and forth, and I said, "Sure you can," and they did it. So it's going to work out beautifully. Free parking at Angel View, at Miracle Hill, and Desert View. And thank you very much to the city for all of your support, you've been absolutely phenomenal, including the Spa City Bus that will transport people between Angel View and the festival site, back and forth all day with Daniel Coward, the driver, we absolutely love him. And we're open from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Cabot's to the public, free admission to everybody. And something new that we also have this year, our newest board member is Jeffrey Mark, who's an Emmy Award winner and a Grammy Award nominee. And he has a few friends, including Dawn Wells, who played Mary Ann on Gilligan's Island, and she will be appearing. Jeffrey Mark is the master of ceremonies, Keisha D., Brian Gallo, KMIR, Larry Atello. And what I'm really excited about is there's a 14-year-old from Desert Hot Springs High School, Saigo, who's a phenomenal singer, and he sings my music. So thank you very much, come and enjoy the whole day.
What's your music, Metallica? No?
People say Frank Sinatra.
Okay. God, I was bigger than that, yeah. No, I heard he's fantastic. Jay is my last blue card. Anybody would like to speak in public comments, this is your final call.
Hi, Jay Cooley, I'm a resident here at Desert Hot Springs. And because the video I'm about to present to you runs just under three minutes, I'm going to let it run without further ado, so go ahead. And yes, from this point forward here in Desert Hot Springs, any explosions should be followed by unleashing the butterflies.
Very good. Thank you, Jay. I have no other speaker cards, anybody would like to speak in public comments tonight? All right, we'll close public comments tonight, and we'll move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have had some questions about our monument that was at the corner of Palm and Paul on the entryway on Palm Drive. As you know, that we've added additional palm trees and landscaping at that location. In the near future, within the next few months, we will have a new art piece at the corner there, in addition to a new city monument that'll be lit, and we'll go with the motif of the corner there. So I want to start with that. Second of all, Danny, can you give us an update tonight again on Palm Drive and where we're at? Also, you know, the new street signs, when we're going to be moving forward with the paving, and those horrible poles will be gone, that type of thing, thanks.
Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, the Palm Drive ATP project, which is, extends from Camino Ventura all the way to Tubunch Palms. It was currently on hold until the utility company actually undergrounded the poles on the west side, which they will be completed by next, the end of next week. So the following, the third week from this week, they'll begin doing some milled and paved. All of our full crews will be out there, they'll be milling, they'll be doing the outside lanes and the inside lanes, and then they'll begin the paving job, and then the striping will follow. The streetlights are going to be installed in the next couple of weeks. We have 34 streetlights, so it is going to take a little bit of time to install them and then energize them all at once. We expect to have them all energized by the end of this year. It should be the third or fourth week of December. The second phase of that project, which will extend from Tubunch all the way to Pearson, and add 24 more streetlights, and also do a resurface of the asphalt, is actually out to bid right now, and the bids are due next Tuesday, the 12th, and they will come back to council on the 3rd to award. So we're moving forward with the Phase 2 as well. And the traffic signal, traffic signal intersection, street name signs are up. We are still troubleshooting a couple of them. The Camino Ventura one came up today, and it's still being troubleshooted, and some wires are still being ran. There's two intersections where the Palm Drive sign actually has, did not have any energy or any power to it. We are running the wires, and we'll have that running by the end of this month. But everything is moving forward, and the Palm Drive entryway, we will have some new monuments pretty soon. Thank you.
And Danny, also, would you mention the, the rest of the medians going up Palm? We'll be adding lights to those?
Yeah.
And also the, the negotiations you're going in, or you're into right now with Palm Springs, and the county reference a entry sign at Indian and the freeway.
Yeah, we currently, last year, we upgraded every single median on Palm and Tubunch, Palm on Ascienda, Palm and Ironwood, Palm and Entryway. It used to be just curbs with dirt, some of them had a couple of landscaping, some of them had a couple of trees. We removed it, improved them, widened them, and added landscaping to all of them. We also ran conduits for future lighting, we just did not install the lighting at that time. We're now getting proposals to install the uplight to match these, the entryway lighting, which is state-of-the-art lighting that we can program, change colors, and do different schemes throughout the year. We're getting proposals for all the medians along Palm Drive, and we're also working on design for the entryway on Indian Avenue, which half of it is the City of Palm Springs, half of it is our city. So we do need encroachment permits from the City of Palm Springs, and if we go farther up north, we do that encroachment permits from the county. So that is all in the way, we have different ones in different phases, ones in design, ones in proposals, but we will be moving forward with those soon.
And I have just one more thing, Assistant City Manager is going to discuss the construction right now at the new city hall and some of the inconveniences unfortunately for our customers that we're experiencing right now.
So the great news is that construction is moving along very quickly on the new city hall project. And so we're at the stage now in the construction where we are redoing the entire parking lot, which is highly inconvenient, and we do understand that. So for the next couple of months, actually for the remainder of the duration of the construction, the parking lot for the city hall located on Palm and Pearson is unfortunately closed off to public access. We are asking that any resident or business owner in the community that is needing assistance, that they go to the city hall located at 65950 Pearson Boulevard. I don't use that address very much anymore, so that they can be assisted properly over there with the appropriate access. And so, again, I do apologize for the inconvenience, but it is necessary to finish this stage in the construction, so that we can get the city hall project open for the public and the community to enjoy for many years to come.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to mayor and councilmember comments, who'd like to go first tonight. Mr. Betts.
Yeah, really good to see the work going on on Palm Drive, good job, and city hall moving along, so nice to hear we have some streetlights coming into Palm Drive and get that lit up and safe, and the new paving is much needed, huh? Quick question here, we had a contract management report that used to be part of the agenda packet, and Councilwoman Pye will remember that, and she got that introduced many years ago. Just a simple request that we get that put back into the package. I know that we probably didn't comment on it much, but I know everybody looked it over and just helped us keep track of things, so it was a great suggestion when you put it on there, so if we get that, I'd love it. Whitewater Preserve, in case you didn't know, is open again. I know it's not right in our city, but it's close enough that a lot of our residents use it, it's a very wonderful facility, and, and don't forget that you can also visit Mission Creek Preserve, that is in our city. We got a new restaurant in town, I don't know if it's officially opened yet, the Indian, it's coming, and that's going in, you know, if he says there's a new restaurant in town, the first thing anybody says is, "Well, is it another Mexican restaurant?" Sorry, that wasn't my joke, that was everybody else's. But it's, it's going to be Indian food, curry chicken, so we'll see if it's better than my wife's curry chicken, but we'll find out. Attended the, I'm losing track of time here, but I think we did the League of California Cities recently, right? Yeah, so, sorry, there's so much going on, time's flying by, but we, we all went to the League of California Cities, or many of us did. And, yeah, the whole bunch of breakout sessions, and I have them listed here, but I won't take that much time, it's, but it's very beneficial, good meeting. One of the presentations that stuck out, some of the things that you learn is, the City of Riverside, they do a festival of lights. And so they had their people, they're giving a presentation on how they do that, and the person who's giving the presentation, well, sorry, you know, apologized for going down into the weeds and getting into all the detail, but if you looked around the room, you saw everybody sitting on the edge of the chair saying, "Well, it's about time somebody got into some detail in one of these breakout sessions or one of these workshops." So that was good, there was other ones on, you hear from cities like Malibu, who, they thought they had everything perfect in their disaster preparedness, and then they had a fire come through, and by the time the fire got to them, all the resources were consumed and taken up on all the other cities that were having the same problem. And they found themselves with great plans, but no way to execute them, so. And then, of course, you talk to the councilmember from Paradise, California, that was a city that basically burned up, and she said, the councilwoman up there said, "We keep getting asked if, what do we think about PG&E shutting off the power?" And they said, "Well, it doesn't matter to us, we're all living in motorhomes right now." So I just, it was interesting, the conversation you get with city councilmembers from all over the state is very beneficial and very helpful, and there were a lot of other good workshops there. Coming up quickly, I got a meeting up in, Jan, Councilwoman Pye and I have a meeting up in Los Angeles, Community Human and Economic Development at SCAG. Attended the town hall that was put on by, I'm going to say, Councilmember Gardner and Griffith on the LGBTQ+. What did you call it? You guys will report on that one, right? I'll let them report on that, but it was very well done, I wanted to compliment you on that. Had a meeting with the Rancho Del Oro Group discussing issues related to the school. Halloween event was very well done by Jackie Chapman and the rest of the volunteers, great job, nice to see that happen. I guess Halloween was uneventful here in the city, we did pretty good on that score. And then I just dealt with a regular assortment of residents' concerns, and please feel free to contact me anything that comes up. Had a resident concerned over the condition of the street in front of their home, they said they lived here for a long time, and it hadn't been paved, and so they're, they're wanting that done. Another one had concern about a motorhome that had pulled up behind their house on their property, and somebody living there, and asking, "Hey, can you help with that?" And then, last thing is the Desert Hot Springs High School baseball team, the kids are looking, they're doing a fundraiser. I asked them how much they needed, it's 545 per student, and a total of 10,000. So it sounds like quite the fundraiser going on there. Have to look into a little bit more about that, but all the kids are looking to raise money for their events. Other than just say, "Great job with staff," and to the city attorney, "Welcome, and good to see you there," and we'll, we'll move on. Thank you.
Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Betts mentioned, we had the LGBTQ Town Hall with the police chief, and it was remarkably well-attended. And I want to thank James Nindl, who's on our planning commission, who originally brought the idea, and Sam Messler back there, who helped facilitate it, and it was exceedingly well-received, I think, by the community. And I think the most impressive thing, and I want to thank my colleagues up here, as well as the city manager, for attending, because the resounding comment that we got was that nobody had been to one of these events where the entire city council, the police chief, and the city manager were all there willing to listen. And it's a message that I keep leaving out there, is that do not be afraid, regardless of who you are, do not be afraid of approaching the city. This city is the most accessible city I've ever lived in, and you have a council that cares, you have a police chief that cares, you have a city manager that cares, and it's all very approachable regardless of what the issue is. So I encourage everybody to remember that. Got a chance to judge the red ribbon anti-drug art contest up at Cabot Yerxa with, with my colleague, Councilmember Griffith, it was a lot of fun. Some great anti-drug messages posted in the window, windows there. And if I remember right, wasn't our winner the fifth-grade class with the saying that, I love this, pardon the pun, "Drugs are nacho friends," with a pile of nachos. I, I had to, I had to give it to them, I had to give it to them. Attended the Greater Palm Springs Convention Visitor Bureau Board, and afterwards we got a chance to discuss specific ways of marketing Desert Hot Springs. And what I wanted them to focus on was our target, to bring in more outdoor recreation, and the target on our spas, our hiking, and our gateway to Joshua Tree and the Sands to Snow National Monument. And I'm hoping they'll take that information and really use that to niche market Desert Hot Springs, because we are well-suited, well-situated, better than any other city in the valley for those things. Speaking of that, the mayor and I had a chance to meet with the regional director of the Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service this last week to discuss Sands to Snow National Monument, getting the park headquarters and the visitor center here, using the model that they use for, out in Palm Desert, for the San Jacinto Mountains National Monument Visitor Center, where they cooperate with a lot of other regional bodies such as Friends of the Desert Mountains, and city staff and others to pay and monitor that. And I have to say that, that they were very excited about working with the city, happy that the city wanted to take such an active part of it. We took them on a little bit of a road trip too, to visit where we would like to site that, that visitor center and some of our possible trailheads at Big Morongo, and up at the top of Santa Cruz, and over at Bryce's Canyon. And it was great to spend the time with them and, and go through and envision what we can have there in a couple of years, parking, restrooms, trailheads, signage, all kinds of things leading to great outdoor recreation here in the city. And one last thing, speaking of trails, the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy Board, which I also serve on, we approved the trail pan, trail plan rather, for Long Canyon Trailhead. And those of you who have been out there east of the city, just on the, on the city border, we're, we're putting in a trailhead and parking and signage about two miles east of Hacienda on Long Canyon Road, on the dirt road out there. That is a great trail, if you like a long hike, you can go all the way up to Yucca Valley on that. What I've done is take a car up there and a group of people, drive back down, hike it down, and then have a car back up there and ride back up and get barbecue, but, you know, that's, that saves you 10 miles of a round trip. But at any rate, it's, it runs through the west end of Joshua Tree, it'll be an absolutely fantastic addition to our hiking trails here in the city, and a great draw for people coming to the city and visiting, doing outdoor recreation, things like that, much like the Big Morongo Canyon Trail coming down to DHS from Morongo Valley. That trail and the, and the signage and parking and all of that should be done by the, by summer of next year, be a great addition to our portfolio, should also help out with some of the crime out there, the, the unauthorized target practice shooting and unauthorized dumping that are out there. The more people we have traveling out there, people parking, visiting out there will, will help clean that up. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Griffith.
First, I want to say a big thanks to the city itself. When Mayor Pro Tempey and I did the walk to school, what I noticed was, on the south side of Hacienda, it was, there was a lot of dumping, and it was very overgrown, and so I talked to the city manager about that, and since then, they've done a great job of clearing it, a lot of people are wondering what's going in there, it's actually nothing, it's just they've done such a good job of cleaning it up, it looks fantastic, and I really want to thank them for their efforts. Did the League of California Cities with everybody else, very informative, lots of educational things, they give you a lot of ideas of what we can do here in the city to improve things, in some cases, way too many ideas than we can actually put into, into plan, but it's good food for thought, and it's great to network with other people and see some of the problems they've encountered, some similar, some not, but to give us ideas to move forward. Also attended the diversity, the LGBT Town Hall with the police chief, and that was very well-attended, and it was great to have the entire council here. I did Shelter for the Storm Luncheon with the city manager, that is an organization that helps victims of domestic violence, and I know they raised quite a bit of money that day. It was a great event, they had silent auctions and raffles, and I was fortunate enough to win one of those, so I felt even better about attending. Attended DHS Family Alliance with Mayor Pro Tempey, which is a group that is trying to find solutions to chronic absenteeism in the schools. Also did the Cabot Yerxa Red Ribbon Judging with Councilmember Gardner over there. Very interesting, there are some really talented kids there, some windows were better than others. I have to give a shout-out to the Kidner Garden Group, because I think as a whole, they had a whole lot of really good stuff. And I asked that if they do this next year, that they actually be a separate category, because I don't think it's fair to expect five-year-olds to compete with fifth graders. So that was a really fun day. Also did, met with the CVB, Convention Visitor Bureau, regarding its, what's it called, Destination Next, something like that, for plans for the future and what I would like to see, which I believe is for them to focus a little more on DHS. I think they've done a great job in kind of pivoting and giving us a little extra attention, I think we deserve it, and I think we have a lot of opportunities coming up that I talked to them about, and hopefully we'll see them do some extra marketing for us. And again, attended the Food Now Chili Cook-Off, very, very exciting event. If you ever get a chance, definitely go, there's lots to eat, there's lots to drink, music. It was a really fun night with everybody, and I had a really good time. That is pretty much all I have for now, so.
Ms. Pye.
Okay. On October 21st, I attended the Mission Springs Water District, and their attorney, John Pickney, is going to do a social media event, and how public officials should be on it and not be on it, and they will invite other agencies to join. Grace Church, Dr., I'm sorry, yes, Dr. Montgomery, it was his last sermon, he is retiring, and so it was good to be there, his whole church, Spanish and English, was, was there, and it was a good send-off. On October 30th, I attended the Adult Social Systems Symposium, and it was mainly about probation, probation, people on probation, and the probation department is different than what I thought it was. They are choosing wraparound services for people. There was some testimony, and this one guy spoke about, he had been in prison off and on for about 26 years. He started drugs at 12, and now he works in a restaurant, and he can't believe that he has a key to the safe and a key to the business. So there are good things that are happening through the probationary office. I also attended Lilac. I also attended Lilac, their board meeting, and I've got two people that applied for the council to also join their meeting. They need more Spanish people, so I found them, someone who wanted to be on the city council. I got them involved with them. Wanted to congratulate Brandon Ulin, U-L-I-N, he's with Desert Hot Springs High School, and he's a board member. He's a board member of education, board member of education on the Student Board with the Palm Springs Cemetery District. November second, Dia de los Muertos, was at the Palm Springs Cemetery, and it's gotten bigger, much bigger than it was before. There was a lot of cars, a lot of people at the gravesites, a whole mix of people. And there's more community involvement. We give it with the Palm Springs Cemetery District and, oh, God. It'll come to me. Martha, not Martha's Village, no, Palm Springs. They do it, huh?
Roy's?
No, they do it with a homeless shelter in Palm Springs. No.
Well in the desert?
Well in the desert.
There you go. Just narrowed them all down. I figured it was the last one.
Attended the DHS Women's Club today, and they are looking forward to getting people to come to their December black and white. It's one of the fundraisers for scholarships. And I attended, I was invited by Chachi, is how I know her name, to the Latino Rotary Club, and they're really doing a good job. They're just starting, but they're really doing a good job. They had the governor, not the governor, the governor of Rotary, attend their meeting, and he was telling them how to do their thing. So I think that's a good thing for them, and that's all I have.
All right. Busy couple of weeks also. The Cabot Museum had their wine and water event, and I wanted to thank the board for inviting us. It was very nice. Don't forget about the gym we have here in our city with Cabot's Museum. So if you love art, or you love history, or you love Desert Hot Springs, this is a great place to have your events. This is a great place to learn that history. This is a great place just to be part of. So if you have a few extra dollars and you want to give it to some sort of art project, this is a great project. Cabot will remember that in the future. Wanted to thank Gary and Robert for bringing the attention, and Jim Nadell, who's on our planning commission, for bringing attention and awareness to the LGBTQ+ community about their needs with our police services. They asked me to do a welcome. I was able to introduce our police chief, and I didn't stick around for all the Q and A, but I heard it was fantastic, and they were, that community came out. There had to have been at least sixty, seventy people in the room. I would say the whole city council, city manager, and our police chief was there. So thank you to everybody that participated in that from the city side. I was honored to be asked to attend the Kehan Mixed Martial Arts Banquet this, I think it was last Saturday. These Saturdays are running together. That's that time of year where we have events every week, it seems like, or every day, I should say. And it was fantastic to watch. There was a black belt ceremony where there was five kids in our community that received black belts. And that's just amazing. The structured program that Eddie Bates, who runs this program, puts on is just amazing. Most of it's around the youth, but it's all, it's adults also. And what happens is that they bring the families in, and there was probably a good five, six different families that actually participate together in exercising and getting healthy. And it's not just about the mixed martial arts, it's about a healthy lifestyle. So very impressed. There was multiple wars given out, but again, very, very impressed with the five black belts that were given out. And we have kids that are traveling all over the world now to compete. They've gone to Rome. I believe there was one other European tour, and they've been all over the United States competing now, just from this small, little studio here in Desert Hot Springs. So very impressive. Deputy City Manager and I, Mr. Rainey, met with Carla Garcia from T-Mobile. They're reaching out in this area as they start to do some more services and upgrade their infrastructure, so that was very interesting. As Mr. Gardner said, the US Forest Service and BLM, we've continued the conversations over the last couple of years in the Sand to Snow. We understand the current administration in Washington DC is not really doing a lot with national parks, but our national park that was designated by the former President Obama has not been taken away from us, which is great. Hundred fifty-nine thousand acres right in our backyard here. So we're going to continue down the path of our vision, which is having a visitor center off of Highway sixty-two, getting support from all the different agencies, and it sounds like we've got some support in those areas. Just got to find some funding. Need money. That leads me into Food Now. Food Now needs money, too, don't you? Food Now is, you know, I love supporting your organization. I love cooking in your chili cook-off. This was the first year, and I don't know how many years. I think there was one year I missed because of a travel issue, but this was the first year I wasn't able to cook. And if some issues come up at work last minute, and I just couldn't get it together, and I was very embarrassed to call Dana and tell her not to do this, but he said, "Come enjoy the evening." And it was the first time I got to see outside the cooking ring there and actually enjoy the evening. It was a fantastic event. Thank you for everything you guys have done, and thank you for continuing that vision that guided us. Go ahead. As the councilmembers alluded to, this Convention Visitor Bureau was here looking at their future plans and what they want to see from us, and I was able to participate in that conversation. Coachella Valley Association of Governments had a transportation meeting yesterday. One thing that pertained to us is signal synchronization. We've been talking about this for probably twenty-five years in the Coachella Valley. As Coachella Valley continues to grow closer to half a million people, signal synchronization is important for the future of transportation so that you can keep the emissions down and other things. We are working, the issue was, there's multiple pieces of hardware, software that go into these control boxes and intersections, and half the Coachella Valley, or some of the Coachella Valley had one kind, the other had another kind, and then there was a few small companies throughout Coachella Valley. So the committee said, it doesn't make much sense to have to build a platform that's going to have to use multiple different vendors. And so they hired an engineer to come up with engineering some software that would actually work for the whole region. So there was a vote on that. The unfortunate part of the whole discussion is that we had to sit through an engineer talking about designing a computer program. He was very excited about it. There was about ten of us in the meeting that had to sit through about a fifteen-minute presentation that was very dry. I hope he's not listening, I'm sorry. But with that said, again, the region working together to get this traffic through was very important. So we're working towards it. We have funding to design. We have funding to come up with what would happen if you were to buy all the equipment. The next part of the funding by the region would be to actually implement all the equipment. So hopefully someday in the near future, we'll see that happen. What is good about that is that, in a recent discussion about four years ago at Riverside County Transportation, was the fact that cars are now talking to signals and talking to each other, and in the future, that's going to happen even more. You'll be driving down the road, and your car is going to stop you from going into a lane because there's another vehicle next to you, or there's going to be multiple vehicles coming up on a signal, and the signal is going to read that and open it up because there's no vehicles in the other lanes. So these are some of the cool technology things that are coming in the future. I've been accused of trying to take cars away. I'm not, I'm just trying to make them get to point A to point B faster. Inside joke, sorry. Happy Halloween event. I wanted to thank Jackie Chapman and the Rotary Club for all the work they did on that. We probably, I was out there ninety-nine percent of the evening, and we probably saw at least a thousand people come through there, I would say. I mean, I might be exaggerating a little bit, but...
That's a lot, they came and went.
Yeah, it was quite a bit. And we were literally shutting down the obstacle course, and they were still running it, even though there was no fruit or candy available to them. They loved it. So at nine o'clock, we were trying to shut it down, they were still coming. But great event. Thank you to the Rotary Club and Jackie Chapman, and everybody that participated, obviously. Veterans Day this year, the CCAC is having the event on the Sunday before Veterans Day, which is the tenth, which is this coming Sunday, nine-thirty at Veterans Park. The reason for that is they thought they'd put it on a different, the day before, so that they didn't run into all the other events running up on the eleventh. So if you're going to participate in the Veterans Day this year, it'll be on the tenth, this Sunday, at nine-thirty at Veterans Park. Just a couple of quick announcements. I always like to put this out there. December ninth is the Women's Club event. That's your black, black and white? And this is always a great event. If you have a few dollars, I think it's forty dollars for a ticket, and I think Jan will sell you one. She's part of the Women's Club. But all the money goes to scholarships in our community for kids that are going off to college. Is that correct?
Yes.
So far, I got it right? Good. But it's a fun event, too. You get to come, there's food, dancing, all that stuff. So if you have a few extra bucks in the holiday season, it's a great place to put it. Our city will be having their holiday parade and festival again this year on December fourteenth. If you want to sign up, you can go online still. You can call City Hall. The parade this year will be from Mission Lakes Boulevard to Pearson Boulevard. We won't cut off the arterial to the city this year, traffic-wise. They'll be able to hopefully flow through here. And again, it'll be a light parade, ending at Pearson and Palm, where we'll have the festival. So again, entertainment, food, free rides, and it should be a fun evening. And then, is it okay if I talk about what's happening Sunday night with Donna Poizina?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Donna Poizina, if you don't know her, she's been kind of our inside photographer, cheerleader. She's sat on multiple commissions. She also runs a neighborhood group page, and I believe it's ten thousand people? Eleven thousand people now participate in that page. This was started when the city was in a real bad place many years ago, and she comes to the community and wanted to learn who her neighbors were. She's unfortunately moving out of the community. And so what we're doing is, an event's being put on at Miracle Springs on, at...
Sunday?
Four o'clock?
Four to six.
Four to six at Miracle Springs on Sunday, the tenth, if you want to come say goodbye. She's committed to continue to run the page until someone can take it over, and she's committed to coming back and saying hi every once in a while. She's not going to be too far away. I believe her kids live a couple hours away, so she'll be close. But it's a great send-off to someone that's done a lot for our community. So with that, I will close my comments, and we're going to move on to our agenda.
I have one more.
Oh, one more comment.
Sorry, she came in just in time. I have a video of senior center, senior center and art. This provides therapy for the senior centers, not just mentally, but for their hands as well. And they have them displayed at the senior center because everybody takes their art book home. So there's more than just old folks' conversation at the senior center.
All right, move on to our agenda. I'm going to move our administrative calendar, two items first, to the top of the agenda. Our very first item is going to be item twelve, which is Lead Leadership Education Action Development Group Two Community Project. I'll have the lead team members come up, and this is a receiving file, it's informational. Anna, are you taking the lead on this? For lead?
I am, yes.
Lead for lead?
Everybody come up. Good evening, Mayor Madison, City Council, and staff. Let me first start by introducing my lead team, as you can see on the PowerPoint. Lovely PowerPoint. See if it works. Go ahead.
Monica Gare from Human Resources. Madison Phillips, police officer. Viviana Sorio, Finance Department.
Tyler Messer, Code Compliance Officer.
Clarice Vera, Cannabis Compliance.
Hi, I'm Richard Minn, I'm the Building Inspector.
Hi, Craig Barnes, Information Technology Department.
Ramay Bhishara, Engineering Department.
We also have Kenneth Tally from the Animal Control, whom could not be here due to his son being promoted to Staff Sergeant in San Diego. And I am Anna Morales, representing the City Manager's Office. To start off this presentation, we would each like to share our thoughts about the program. Being chosen for the team leader position came as a shock as I was elected unanimously by the team. Even though I was considering volunteering for that position, my colleagues beat me to the punch. Nevertheless, being a leader tested my leadership skills and taught me that what it meant to have a responsibility of a team and a project, to also have dedication and perseverance in ensuring a project go through from start to finish. With this experience, I've learned how important communication and leadership really is an engine to any project.
Going into this program, I was actually excited to learn the different, all the different departments, and that communication from one department to the next and also from one employee to the next is actually the key success, to the key to bring success to any kind of business or even to any city government.
Being a part of the lead team was more than I expected. I learned a lot from directors, from leadership skills to how we can all work together to achieve the goals of the city. The community project was also rewarding, and I learned much more about our schools here in Desert Hot Springs and the many needs of our youth. My overall experience was both interesting and rewarding.
The lead team program was very informative. It was eye-opening to hear from each city official and gain a better understanding of both the vision for their department and how the different departments coalesce to form a unified body that's able to serve the citizens of Desert Hot Springs. I thought it was also cool to see how cool some of our supervisors are and hearing a little bit about their hobbies and their home life, and that was really neat. Thank you.
So I'm a little opposite. I wasn't really excited to start the program, only because of the first lead team's experience and their stories that they shared. However, as the program started to progress, it was interesting. It was really eye-opening and really cool to see all of the department heads light up when they spoke about their families and their hobbies, and just to see that other side of them. Our group was a really great group. I mean, we all had a relationship, a working relationship with each other, but this group brought us closer together, and it makes us working together even better. And thank you to the city for providing this program for us.
The lead program gave me understanding of relations between city departments and expectation, each department has other from other. It also taught me how to improve my communication skills. One of the most important things that already I lead in this, involved in our community project... project, it gave me a chance to help all other of our community, and need to help everybody. Thank you.
The lead team, for me, when I was joining, I, I had a lot of expectations, and it definitely met all of them and exceeded my expectations. It definitely taught me the different leadership styles of every department head that we have here, and all the different personalities in the family lives, some of you who I've already known, but some backgrounds that were kind of new to me. So it was, it was really nice to know all of that, and like Clarissa said, it really kind of brought us all together. Being a part of a team, working on a group project together, it, it's really like a team-building exercise, and I really, I really appreciated the opportunity to do that. And then Kenneth Tally, who couldn't be here today, he also wanted to share a quick quote. So I'm just going to work, read it verbatim here. So the lead program was an excellent way to allow me to get to know my coworkers and leaders within the city. Not only did I get to know the leaders of the city, but I also got to see firsthand how committed these leaders are to the citizens of the city. And again, he couldn't be here today because he's attending his son's promotion in the Marines, so congratulations.
All right, the project, the project that we chose was to go fill all the backpacks for the Food Now over there with Dana. And I think we got just under 1,000 backpacks, and while we were there, we filled close to like, what was 150? 125. So that was pretty awesome, pretty eye-opening to see how, how much they actually do for the community.
In a typical month, Food For Now distributes 7,000 pounds of fresh fruit, including apples, bananas, and over 2,000 pounds of grains into these backpacks. Thanks to Dana Johnson, Executive Director, and dedicated volunteers that do this, and then Margie Dennis.
All right, so I'm going to share a few photos with you guys. So the first photo on, to your left, that is me, with a dolly full of backpacks. So we ordered, I believe it was 41 cases of backpacks, 984 backpacks in total. So the middle picture there, Tyler, was, was amazing, to let us borrow his truck, and we stacked it up in Dana's little warehouse back there before we packed it. And then to the left again, so Craig, Monica, Anna, and I, we went to Costco to buy all of the food to pack into the backpacks. So the photo on the left is kind of toward the beginning, when we were still shopping, and you'd be amazed how hard it is to find child-friendly items in bulk. I don't know how Marge and Denise do it, but yeah, so they've managed to find everything, and it needs to be child-safe, and pop tops, and everything like that, so. The picture on the left was toward the end, we were pretty much done with our shopping spree, and just took one last selfie. And then, picture on the left, same one. The one on the right, I think we were actually at the registers, and everybody was staring at us, asking what those were for. So I think we told a couple of people that it was for donations for the children, and for Food Now, and, and so, yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty interesting going out and seeing everybody's faces when we're spending that much time and that much money, so there's...
There's a before and after shot of, they had specific items that we needed to purchase, proteins, fruits, grains. We couldn't just go in and buy, you know, Captain Crunch cereal boxes, but, so we were able to fill up a couple carts. And it fit perfectly in the city's SUVs, and then we were able to take it and deliver it to the Food Now.
Okay, this is actually when we got to the facility, it took a few trips because there were so many food we purchased. Once we got into the facility, we had everything organized on the shelves. Here we are devising a plan of how we're going to get this all together. We had packed 125 backpacks, and we had, we did it in about an hour. So and Marge was so grateful, she was so good giving us advice on how we can get it done very fast.
So what they didn't mention was that it took us about 10 to 15 minutes to get our, get a flow, a rhythm. They came in and they showed us how they did it. We set up stations, and each of us were at a station, so our job was to fill that station's portion into the backpack. And then somebody else's station was to take the backpacks once they're filled and place them in a shopping cart, so that way we could push them to a shelf, so that way they could grab them and distribute them later.
Now we almost spent like two hours to finish this 125 bag, and this is the best two hours we spent together, we know how to deal as a group together, and almost done, this is the last, last photo for us as a, as a work.
Here we had just completed filling about, I think there was 100 backpacks on the shelves there, do you want to go to the next one? Yeah, so that whole shelving unit there, on each shelf is about 10 backpacks, and when it's completely full, there's about 100 backpacks on there, so it had all the important fruits and nuts and grains and everything else that they needed. There's about 25 extras that they requested that we put in actual plastic bags, which we also did too as well.
So the reason why we chose this program, and specifically is because, one, it touched our hearts, we literally were about to cry when Dana Johnson was talking about all the help that they need, and what they lack of the most is extra hands. What made us choose it, another reason why it made us choose this program was, we made it our goal to spread the word, and have hopefully the community come in and help all of these wonderful people who put up their time, who volunteer their time, their normal days of time, to help these children fight chronically hunger during school, which at the times that after we, we actually met with the school liaisons, we noticed that it's very hard for families to come up and get help themselves. Call it proudness, call it being proud, but it's no, it's no fun, coming in and asking for help. With this amazing program, it helps those who need it. Children will say no to food. Children will always be hungry. And this program, by us providing them the time that we took to go get the food, the time that we took to help pack 125 backpacks that they do every week meanwhile school is running, is amazing. If we did that in an hour, if the community can go and volunteer their time, imagine how much can get done. Apart from donations, they need money, obviously, to provide more food, because that's 125 backpacks feeds about 25 kids here and there, and it's split between five to seven schools. The requests will always be there. The help is what they need. And that's why we decided to participate in, in this beautiful program, that hopefully after this, a lot of the community can get together and help, and be part of making a change into these children that are our future generation. So this is where, again, the school liaisons came in, they gave their quotes, we asked a couple of questions, which you will hear them now. One of the questions that we asked them was introduce themselves, and what schools they represent, what has been their experience with the school in the backpack program, and if they have any request for more backpacks from Food Now.
Mary Robles, Community Liaison, Student Services, I'm in Bubbling West.
My name's Yuriana Robles Vernaby, Student Services, and I work at Bellevue Elementary School.
Viviana Velazquez, and I work at Julius Corcini Elementary.
Every family has a different situation, but we assess the situation first, and it comes up to attendance risk. And later on, it's, it's, the more information we get from our parents, is the more all the necessities expressed. So in this case, the Food Bank has been a big help for our families. I used to get 10 backpacks two years ago, and from our request, they were able to provide 15 more for this year, and I still am in need of five more, so yes. In my experience, the poverty level is increasing in my area. Most of my students are in, from Sky Valley, and what is called the, outside the city, we're part of the, not the city, the community. Yes. So we have issues with transportation and poverty, of course, money-wise, need a lot of help of resources, as it is food.
I just started last year, so this is also my second year. So like, like she said, a lot of it starts through attendance, or a lot of it starts from referrals from others. This, this year I have two new families that are homeless, so they actually live in hotels. So those are ones that, once we know that, then I try and give them as many resources as I can, and this one, this one was one of the ones that I was able to provide for them. And then sometimes with Dana, sometimes if you have extra, like if, let's say I had a family that needed food, they didn't have any food at all to eat, so he was able to provide like a box of food for them. So like, it, it just depends on, on the need, like she said, there's a lot of poverty, and it is rising, I have a lot of families in and out of hotels all the time, or sharing residences because they can't afford it, or they've been evicted so they don't have any other way of living but sharing. So a lot of the times we get it through teachers, staff, ourselves. A lot of the time it's really hard to get parents to open up and actually tell us that they are actually in need, and sometimes we know because of the student talks, and then the parent gets mad. But then later on, they're like, okay, we're grateful because we are able to get all these other resources and help. So having to actually be able to provide and actually knowing, okay, this weekend they're actually going to eat something, that's actually very helpful for them and for the, the families.
I got 15 this year, more.
So we have, I have 25 this year, I started with 10 last year.
So there were 100 total last year, so they increased to 125.
Yeah, because Cabot had the...
For the five elementaries in this area.
Because last year we were getting 20, 10, and then they raised it to 20, and then this year now it's 25.
So what resources would you need to make the program more successful? More backpacks, more volunteers, poverty grows every day, more people to help them distribute the food for people in need, for people who are afraid to come up and ask for the resources? That's what they need help on. They need extra volunteers.
Something I didn't think about was, you know, these kids have these backpacks, they go to school basically to eat, and they're fed throughout the week, but then the weekend, there is no school, and there is no food. And so the backpacks, they take home with them on Friday, and then they have some food for the weekend. What we didn't realize was, what do they do during winter break, you know, when they're out of school for two weeks, or they're out of school for two months? That's really when it gets tough on these kids and on these families, and, and the liaisons kind of, you know, informed us of that and helped us to understand it. And so I don't know what the answer is, but they do need more hands and help even with delivering these backpacks. The liaisons do this a lot on their weekends, sometimes they have to hunt these families down because they move, and so a lot of their time is spent doing detective work and trying to hunt the families down, find out where these kids are, and so they can get something to eat.
So the lead group didn't want to stop from there. I went to Palm Springs with Subaru and talked to the manager. He is all for sponsoring the Food For Now from now on, and possibly having two employees each week help for two hours. So big thanks to Subaru of Palm Springs.
And like in the beginning, again, another special thank you for Dana Johnson, Marge, and Denise, and all the volunteers for providing all their time, dedicated time. The school liaisons, Mary Robles, Yuriana Robles Vernaby, Viviana Velazquez, Claudia Gomez. And again, we encourage every one of you, if you would like to volunteer, to please volunteer, contact Dana Johnson at area code 760-288-7878, or at www.FoodNow.com. And, and that concludes our presentation.
Fantastic job, guys.
Oh, before I forget, one more thing, sorry. So the lead team had a remaining amount of $816.10. That was not, that was raised clear restoration for a budget of $5,000. And as a group, we would like to donate it to Food Now, so they can go ahead and use it as they best think. Budget-wise, more backpacks, more food, it's a gift from us.
Awesome, great job, guys.
No, you cannot thank them.
I just want to thank you all so much for, for your resources and for your time and your efforts, but also for spreading the word, for getting the word out that there's needs out there, and we can, when we come together, like you have shown so beautifully, when we come together as a community, and we help out, we lift that helping hand, and we all come together, then, then we can raise people up, you know? There's no reason a child should have to worry about where the next bill is coming from. And with your efforts and the efforts of people like Mary and, and all those schools, we can help, and this, this has the effect on generations, so thank you so much. Thank you for the donation, and thank you. I just got to point something out, though, the website is not correct up here, so I just wanted to, you know, put a blast out here, the website is FoodNowDHS.org, okay? FoodNowDHS.org. And any volunteers, please come on down, all right? All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you to Food Now, thank you to Lead, you guys did a fantastic job. Take the rest of the night off now.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you so much. And we're going to move to item number 13 on our agenda. We also needed to move this item up tonight as a request, item number 13, the stagnant water inspection and abatement warrant, release waiver indemnity agreement, this will be Code Compliance Manager Christina.
It's a tough act to follow.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Bugs in green pool water might not be as heartwarming. So I'm the Code Compliance Manager with the City of Desert Hot Springs. Earlier this evening, the General Manager of Coachella Valley MCD, Jeremy Woody, he gave a stellar presentation on the Coachella Valley MCD, and I'm here to kind of piggyback on that, in hopes to aid their efforts to abate vectors and vector-borne diseases. So we're requesting your approval for the stagnant water inspection and abatement warrant release and indemnity agreement between the City of Desert Hot Springs and the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Controlled District. In order to abate vectors and vector-borne diseases, the district possesses an inspection and abatement warrant allowing the district officials to enter the exterior of properties to inspect and treat pools of, pools and other bodies of water. The warrant authorizes the minimal use of force, such as opening and unlocking gates to access the exterior of properties. The warrant also allows any representative or designee of the district to execute the warrant. The district has formed agreements with the cities of Palm Desert and Rancho Mirage to be designees under the warrant. The agreement allows representatives of the respective cities, such as code enforcement officers, to use the warrant to access exterior properties of their respective jurisdictions for the purpose of inspecting and abating pools and bodies of water that are conducive to vector activity. Currently in order to access backyards... Currently in order to access backyards or locked areas behind a gate or fence, staff would either need consent of the property owner or an inspection warrant. Obtaining warrants can be time consuming depending on the availability of courts to review warrant applications. By being added as a designee under the warrant, the staff may access the exterior of any property in this city if they suspect a pool or body of water that is conducive to breeding mosquitoes. So this will greatly decrease the time to treat pools in response to reports of vector activity within the city. Jeremy and I are here tonight to answer any of your questions.
I'll open up to the public at this time. Would anybody like to make any comments in the public? Okay, just give me one minute and go ahead. State your name, you have three minutes. Our screens aren't working here. Hold on one second, Brad. Are you able to time?
I won't take long.
Go ahead.
My name's Brad Anderson. I live in City of Rancho Mirage. I would suggest that the city postpone any type of agreement with the vector control district at this time. Because of this warrant, I noticed on the city website that you had the warrant itself. But you did have any of the supporting documentation for that? Meaning the affidavits given by the general manager and the person on the warrant, the main person, the scientific officer, which is no longer employed by the district. So that's kind of a catch 22 that you shouldn't be jumping into that at this point. And I'm kind of concerned because code compliance or law enforcement can get a warrant if they need to enter properly. And to abate a pool, that's really, that's really the district's responsibility. And again, I would strongly recommend that you read the documentation, the affidavits, because it clearly states that a state certified district staff technician would have to perform those abatement proceedings. So I don't, I don't see any call for that. And being like I had some adverts asking on my property in the City of Rancho Mirage where that warrant was intentionally misused to enter my property for I had no water on my property and none of my neighbors were affected by that or even their properties were not entered, I guess. So I would hate to see this type of entry to into people's private property be abused. And I think that's where this would happen or what would happen or possibly, potentially could happen if you move forward with this. And again, I have a letter I'd like to submit, more or less detailing all my comments plus some others. But I would strongly recommend even the affidavit or the, that was given to the court of Riverside had misleading facts, non-true statements to secure that warrant. And it's going to be, it's going to, well, anyway, I would think this void, the warrant would be voided as is, but I'm not a lawyer, so I would suggest that you look at the documentation before you enter into this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments tonight? Close public comments this time. Mr. Gardner, any questions?
Not necessarily a question, but just to kind of give a little bit of background on this. We started this process back in the spring after the very, very wet spring. It had a lot of activity out here. And I got a call from a citizen who was concerned about an abandoned house with an abandoned pool in the backyard that had quite a bit of standing water in it and we needed to get out there and treat that. And in the process of doing that, we found that the city had not executed this agreement with the district that we needed to, in order to be able to help each other out in this process. And so working with code compliance and with the district, we were able to get those pools pumped out, get those mosquitoes treated, get that going. And this agreement will further facilitate that in a much more streamlined process down the road. Next year, we're going to need that. And so it's critical that we get this approved. And I'm really happy to see that we've reached this far. So good job with that, with our legal staff, with Christina from the code compliance and with the district. So I would urge my fellow council members to approve this.
Ms. Spitz?
Yeah, I'm, does the vector agency not have employees to go out and do this type of inspections? You, everybody just sits down there at the building and you don't have anybody out in the field?
Yeah, we actually, we actually do have people out in the field. But as I mentioned in my presentation, we have a lot of challenges that are faced, not only in our district but around the state. And really what vector control agencies across the state are doing, looking for ways to find force multipliers. We can't do what we need to do all alone. That's why we're engaging the public and that's where we're engaging. It makes sense from a standpoint of, one of our missions, one of my goals is working with other government agencies. Not that we have the same exact missions that drive our institutions, but we have commonalities. And it's, I think it's good government to, when we have common interests and common objectives in mind, to use each other as resources and that, and work better and more efficiently so we can cover, cover the ground.
Without getting into the justifications, if there's a situation where we know there's a pool that's an abandoned house and we call you up, is it going to take a week, a month? How long is it going to take for you to get somebody up there?
We have one technician that is designated to Desert Hot Springs. So if you give us a call, you're in a neglected pool and depending on what's going on in the year, we'll be there that week.
Okay, and they're the ones who will go in and treat that property? So it takes somebody from the district?
Correct, yeah, so as far as it goes from any chemical treatments. And that's the thing, once, if this is approved by the council, it's working with code enforcement to really sketch the workflow, how that would happen.
Okay, but my question is, you've gotten access now, you've determined there's a pool in there. We've called you in, your guy's got there and he's determined there's a pool that needs to be treated. It's your employees are going to apply the remedy, the chemicals that are going to kill the, or the abatement of the situation. Okay, so code getting on there, our city code getting on there isn't going to facilitate the correction, only the identification of a problem?
Yeah, what we've been doing, for example, with Palm Desert is their code and compliance does pumping. We don't do pumping of pools. And so one of the things that we work in collaboration with the City of Palm Desert is to work, collaborate with them. They have agreements already set up with pool pumping services and come in and actually pump the source dry. What we do is apply long-term mosquito larvicides. We also stock some of these neglected pools with mosquito fish.
So I can, you know, I can understand the, when you mentioned the going in there and pumping the pools, but I got some concern, as the other gentleman raised, about your motivation is mosquitoes and vectors and dealing with that. But we also have a code department that's also tasked to do other things.
Correct.
And for, I guess in state law, you can enter property. The legislature's determined that you, for your purposes, can enter a property. But I think the state has also determined that our code enforcement can't go and unlock a gate, can't do anything except go from point A to point B, which would be from the street to the door, and must get permission or must get a warrant. And so, you know, I'm reading Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that provides all of us protections against unreasonable search. And I can see the potential for abuse in this one. And I don't know what the questions are, the specifics that were raised by the speaker regarding if there's anything here that's deficient. I would want to know about that further. Maybe your attorney can weigh in on that one. But the, I'm not comfortable granting extra authority to our code enforcement to go do something that, you know, would give them ability to say, hey, you know what? I want to go in and look here, so I'm just going to say there's a pool of water and that gave me ability to get around the other protections that we have. Now, you know, every time you say something like that, somebody in code is going, well, what do you think we're doing here? What do you think about it? Well, it's not the problem with the existing code. But we've had past instances and, you know, times can get bad again, where we actually had our code people go into locked garages with a bolt cutter and remove cars from inside somebody's garage. And the city ended up having to pay a settlement on that. And, you know, there were problems, there were abuses. And that's what we're here to protect, to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I don't, I'm not comfortable giving our code that type of authority that overrides the Fourth Amendment to the, and then whatever protections the legislature has created for us, when I think that your agency can probably take care of it and does do it. And I just don't see it as that dire that we need to open up that can of worms. So that's where I'm at on that one. I would vote no on this.
Yeah, just to give a little bit of background, we've had this warrant, blanket warrant since 2008. It's something that's been going, gone through the court systems each year since that and gets reviewed by judges through that process. So it's been a successful piece. It's not the silver bullet unfortunately for everything, but does serve us in times when we do need to access properties. In 2008 was because of the bubble bursting, we had so many. We have close to over 1,000 pools in our database that we have to monitor at some level over the course of the year. So again, this effort is a way just to work more efficiently and streamline with our other agencies.
How much money does the district have in reserves? What's your budget like right now?
Our budget, annual budgets is close to over 10 million.
And how many millions of dollars do you have in reserves?
In reserves, for public health emergency, close to 4 million.
4 million, how much total reserves for the agency?
We have close to lower 13 million, I believe.
So you have $13 million in reserve and the budget, annual budget, how much?
Over 10 million.
Okay, so you've got healthy reserves there. The, and I know you guys lowered your fees. It was $10, now it's, it was down to as low as $3 and now it's up to $5 or where it's at right now?
Yeah, it's close to, closer to 13 now.
It's back up to 13? So you, okay, but it was at 10 and then went back down and now you've put it back up to 13? So you're collecting sufficient revenue?
Which is off the topic tonight. So that's, yes, it was, you're asking for, this is a totally different topic. Their budget, their presentation was given earlier, you should have asked those questions during that time. So I'm asking you to get back on topic.
It is on topic because the point making is they...
All right, well, I'm reeling as the mayor, it's not on topic, so I'm asking you to stay on topic.
I am on topic.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, you're not, so please move on.
Okay, well, let me explain why I'm on topic.
I don't know what their budget has to do with this warrant.
Because if they're asked, the basis for them wanting to use our staff, our code staff to do their job is to maximize leverage their ability to get the job done. But they have sufficient revenue within their budget and reserves. They're not broke, they're not a cash strapped company.
Under your opinion, again, it's not about their budget this time, it's about their requests. So if you can ask a specific question to them and stop dragging this out.
Okay, so you so cash strapped that you can't hire people to do the job?
The point of it tonight is, and I'll get back to why I think I was here.
Well, I was just asking, I'm just asking.
No, no, fortunately, we're not, we're not, we're not a cash strapped agency.
So that's it, that's all I need to know.
So if you're going to let him answer the question, don't talk to him.
If you stay on the question, fine, you seem to be in a hurry to move us along.
I would just like you to ask a question, let the question be answered and then respond to the question. As he's respecting you, I'd like you to respect him.
The point is, we have, code enforcement and the district have similar missions. I know the city has codes that doesn't allow for nuisance and breeding of vectors on properties. Code and compliance, I know it gets reports of these, we get reports of these. The point of this whole effort is just to work, collaborate together on a similar cause. It's not giving authority to your code enforcement agents to work out without the, we're overseeing it.
It's giving them authority to enter a property though, right?
There are designees, so they're, they're accessing...
But it's giving them authority to enter a property.
But we're, we're giving that, we're authorizing that, that access to that property.
Okay, I made, thanks, I appreciate it. I made my point, that's, thank you.
Ms. Pa, you're next up in the queue.
I have questions.
Sure.
But I'm going from memory because I read everything and my computer did something. So I'm doing by memory. And Mr. Attorney, I'd like for you to hear my questions and just make sure they're to form. You talked about one specific mosquito. What about all the other mosquitoes that you talked about in your presentation?
So there's three, we have three mosquitoes in our district that are what we could call a vector. And those are, they transmit, actively transmit pathogens to people. Two of the mosquitoes are ones that we've had here for many, many years. And one mosquito in particular is, and I'll talk in reference to neglected pools, is a mosquito that's regularly found in those pools, so it's a vector. It can transmit West Nile, St. Louis encephalitis.
That's the AE...
And so the ADI's egypti mosquito, or the yellow fever mosquito, which that's its common name, is a new mosquito not only within our area but throughout Southern California. And they've recently found it up as far as Sacramento. And it's a mosquito that can transmit other viruses that we don't have actively transmitted in California, but is one that can potentially spread those diseases if we do get them.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about the other ones, just that one?
We, our biggest, and this is one of the ways that we, because we do have a limited staff. We have, we can't hire unlimited number of staff to do what we need to do, but we use a risk assessment. So every year, this year for an example, we run models that were developed between the UC system, California Department of Health and the Mosquito and Vector Control Association of California. And we use those models to focus our resources. We can't be everywhere, we can't be everybody's backyard all the time. But we can focus where we are based on the risk to our public. And so this year, when I showed that picture of the heat map, those models were showing us in Palm Springs, that's where the risk was greatest. And the shoreline near Mecca, those communities were at most risk for vector borne disease. And that's where we prioritize our work.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out why the warrant said just that one mosquito.
All right, so before 2016, that warrant from 2008 up until that point was focused on West Nile virus prevention. So it's a tool that we use judiciously because it is a great, it's a power that's granted to us through the health code and through the courts to actually access properties that are of potential concern. And potential concern, for example, for this summer, we had to use those warrant in some areas where we had lots of risk of West Nile virus. So as I said, we have a database of over 1,000 pools. We know where these pools are, suspect where these are. Every year, our district takes aerial photographs of the desert and works with a competent pinpoint neglected pools. We use that information to go out into the communities to focus our efforts to see, okay, is this a neglected pool? Is it a putting green? What is it in someone's backyard?
Real simple.
Okay.
It's just one mosquito. That's all I want to know. It's just one mosquito that's in the warrant and you're not worried about the other ones? Yes or no?
No.
I'm trying to get there. Okay, let me ask you another question.
Can I, I'll finish that piece about the 2016. So prior to 2016, we had two mosquitoes that were vectors of West Nile, St. Louis. 2016 hit, we had this mosquito, ADI's egypti, which we added to the warrant because this mosquito is very hard to detect in traps. It's not as, we're not successful entrapping as the other ones because of the nature of the mosquito. And so, and it doesn't fly very far. So if we find this mosquito, we want to access properties where we find it so we can try to eliminate it as quickly as possible because it does have the potential to transmit disease and it does have the potential to change the way of life that we have here in our valley, but also in California.
Okay, I'm just working on the contract.
Sure.
And the warrant. And the contract is just one type of mosquito? Because I got one more question.
Councilmember Pa, can I answer your question on that? I know exactly what you're asking. You're asking whether the warrant covers all types of mosquitoes or whether it's limited to the one that you're talking about? And the answer is, if they find an infestation of anything causing West Nile or these types of diseases, they can eradicate it immediately.
Okay.
Okay, any of them. If they find the, help me with the name.
ADI's egypti.
ADI's egypti, then there's certain notices they have to do. And then they do something in addition to that.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question as to?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yeah.
The other question. The warrant starts in April of 2009 and it expires December 19th.
Right.
Why?
That has to do with the justification for it because that's April, March through the end of November is traditionally the virus season. So the initial driver for the warrant before ADI's egypti was the risk of virus. During the months of January through February, March, the temperatures in the valley aren't really conducive for virus replication of mosquitoes. So what happens at the end of the warrant is we go back to the court and we get an extension through the winter period so that we can access these neglected pools. Because once the warrant expires, we have to go through the same process that code enforcement have to go to, to get into the back of these, some of these yards. Yeah.
You're giving me too much information. Just straight on.
Yeah.
So this one expires December 9th. So one of us are going to have to remember that you need to go back to court. so we can extend it, or can we just extend it?
We take care of that. We do that every year. We've done that for many years.
Okay, but this one, it just says it expires December 19th, and then you have to do a report from April to December, but it's not talking about what you have to do during the other months.
Because the warrant and that stipulation applies to that warrant for that period. Then in the winter months, we have extensions which are different.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more question, sorry.
That scared me.
One more question. In the contract, it appears that we have the ability to hire contractors. But my understanding is you're hiring the contractors, if there's any contractors, not us.
It's only if some cities have agreements with contractors to pump pools. So Palm Desert, for example, is one of those, is where they have.
Got it.
Mr. Griffith?
I just have a couple of questions for clarification, just out of curiosity. Do the calls have to go through you before code enforcement goes in, or do they, can they call code enforcement?
Right, so what we would do is, if this were to be approved, I would have my staff sit down with the code enforcement staff and figure out, and sketch the framework for how it should work, but the district needs to be the lead on it. But because both agencies get similar reports, it works to the benefit of the residents of Desert Hot Springs. If they get a report, then they contact us, and then we work in concert to execute the warrant if needed. Many times, we just post the warrant, and if it's not a dire situation where we have a lot of risk in an area, we do, we don't just, just as the warrant stated, we can knock if no one answers, we can use reasonable force. But typically in areas, because we don't want to impede on people's amendment rights, Fourth Amendment's rights, if we don't have to, we notice them and we ask them to contact the district within 48 hours. If we don't hear from them, then we go back and decide. Again, it's all about risk in public health, and we have to assess that because we want to use that tool judiciously so we can maintain that for years to come, as we've been successful over the last decade.
Okay, so they do get some kind of notice typically?
Mm-hmm.
And how often would you say that you have used Palm Desert's code enforcement in terms of percentage versus your own staff?
I don't have that off the top of my head, Councilman Griffith, but I could come back with you that, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Do you think it's a lot, not a lot?
I would say of, well, it's been one of our initial cities that we worked with, collaborated like this, so it's not a lot. But, you know, for example, this year, we've used the warrant since April just over 100 times. And so, and this has been a busy year, so I would say on average, over a course of the entire valley, it's used around that many times. So 1,000 times since we got the warrant in 2008.
Okay, and so do you find that using the city's code enforcement has been beneficial? I mean, have you seen any improvement in terms of abatement?
Yeah, I mean, one of the issues for us, and it's been one within mosquito control, and something that I want to look at for the district, there's always been a threat of lawsuits because of pumping and draining pools, and cracked, and people falling in, and all kinds of liability issues. But I don't get a good sense from, say, for example, from the city of Palm Desert, that's been an issue. So that's something as a district, I want to look at our policy as far as potentially going down that, where we actually actively pump the pools ourselves, because I haven't seen, I haven't, I've heard the talk, but I haven't seen a lot of the concerns with that. To me, a more of a concern is having a big pool of water breeding mosquitoes that can transmit human disease. So from the standpoint of, and now I kind of digressed a little bit, and I forgot your initial question, Councilmember Griffith.
That's okay. And so, and basically, the goal in this is not punitive, it is actually preventative. Is that correct?
It's just to gain compliance, and that's kind of where, and that's, yeah, I won't add more to it. But the point is to gain compliance and get people to take care of their property. Unfortunately, a dry pool is good, but it's not a solution, it's not an ultimate solution for us. We would much rather have people have their pool up and running, but I know things come, and people can't always take care of everything that they have because of financial situations. So that's one thing too, that I know other agencies, and I'm definitely interested in how we can look at city codes potentially to deal with these types of situations. We have, you know, you have abandoned homes and things that get foreclosed on. How can we better deal with these property issues to better, to address from a public health standpoint? Because like I said, we have 1,000-plus dry pools in our database, and it's something that we still have to monitor on a routine basis.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Nobody else in the queue at this time, so entertain a motion. There's a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Betsa Post.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Item number 14, I'm gonna keep moving down the administrative calendars. Approval of the parcel map number 37571 for best development group. Acceptance of dedications for street and public utilities purposes, acceptance of subdivision improvements agreement and related bonds, and acceptance of the utility poll undergrounding agreement. This is, I mean, Daniel Porus, our public works director.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is regarding parcel map 37571. That's actually related to grocery outlet. It has multiple action recommendations, so I'll try to explain it as best I can and answer as many questions. On March 12, 2019, the planning commission approved 100 parcel map 37571 and conditional use permit 0518 for the grocery outlet project with a number of listed conditions. The applicant now wishes to proceed with the final parcel map of 37571 and record a parcel map. The parcel map subdivides one lot of approximately eight acres into two individual parcels. One of those parcels approximately six acres, and the other parcel, two acres. The grocery outlet would be constructed in a two-acre lot. As required by the condition of approval, their property owner is dedicating right-of-way on the street for public utility purposes. The street improvement, the streets are dedicating is 15 feet along the west side of Palm Drive on the frontage of the parcel map, and it is shown on the parcel map. Staff is recommending the city accept these dedications. The improvements for the project, for the grocery outlet project, include street improvements, adjuvancy to a property, streetlights, grading, striping, and markings, landscaping, and irrigation, and drainage devices. All of these are shown in improvements that have been filed with the city. In order to guarantee the installation of these improvements to the city and to any future owners, the developer has signed the subdivision improvement agreement with the city and has submitted associated bonds. You will find those in your exhibits. The bonds include a total performance bond of $461,692.60. The total labor materials bond is $230,846.30. There is a 15% warranty bond of $69,253.89. And there is a total mitigation bond of $10,000. All of these estimates were based on approved plans and quantities using Riverside County standard for bond calculations. The subdivision improvement agreement, if approved, will be recorded with the county recorders along with the parcel map in accordance with our city codes. And in order to satisfy another condition of approval, condition of approval number 100, requiring underground of all utility distribution lines and poles, the developer has executed an agreement to defer undergrounding of utilities and for payment of undergrounding costs with the city. This agreement, the developer will pay $100,000 to the city to go towards the cost for undergrounding utilities no later than the issuance of certificate of occupancy. The underground utilities will also be deferred to commence until the time where one or more adjoining parcels pulls any permit whatsoever. That agreement, the agreement to defer undergrounding for utilities and for payment of undergrounding costs is attached in as your exhibits as well. After the parcel map is recorded and the lots are subdivided, per the conditions of approval, the developer will be required to annex into community facilities district 2010-1 and PTAX 2 prior to COO. The city has received a non-interference letter from Southern California Edison dated October 2, 2019 for the utility easement within the map, and the approved tentative parcel map and the final map, I'm sorry, the approved tentative parcel map and the final map before you show one parcel being subdivided into two individual parcels. Staff recommends the city council find that parcel map is in substantial performance with the previously approved tentative parcel map. With that, there are seven recommendations. The first recommendation is that staff, that city council find that parcel map number 37571 is in substantial conformance with the previously approved tentative map. They approve, that council approves parcel map 37571 in accordance with the conditions of approval. The council accepts the dedications as offered on the map for street and public utility purposes and drainage easements and direct access restrictions. The council accept the subdivision improvement agreement, performance bond, and layer materials bond once approved by city attorney and city manager. The council authorized the city clerk and city engineer to sign the map, evidencing the city council's approval. The council authorized staff to process and file the map and subdivision agreement with the county recorder's office. And the council approved the agreement to defer undergrounding of utilities for, and for payment of undergrounding costs and authorized the city manager to make any changes of the agreement if needed thereto to consummate the project. That concludes my staff report. It was a lot of information. We do have all the agreements and the attachments, and there are some exhibits of the project itself. I'll gladly answer any questions, and we do have the applicant here for any project questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comments on this before we start with questions? No public comments, I'll close public comments. Mr. Bets, you're in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's wonderful to see grocery outlet moving forward. Staff's done a good job putting everything together, and it's nice to see. A couple of questions here on the undergrounding. Authorize the city manager to make any changes to agreement if needed thereto to consummate the project. Is there any question on this one? I mean, that's.
This agreement was in draft when we first staffed, but the applicant actually accepted and has signed the undergrounding agreement and has agreed to all the terms, so we don't expect any changes to go through.
Okay, and so how long will the city hold that money, was it $100,000, before it's refunded? Is there some time limit on this? I mean, some perpetuity?
Yeah, the money would not be refunded. The money would go towards the payment of the undergrounding for a future year. We estimate the cost of undergrounding be between $400,000 and $600,000, which will be, the city receives a rule 20 funds, so in five years, the city will receive enough funding with the addition of the $100,000, and will be able to underground it at that time or any time after that.
So, but there's no time limit on this, like 100 years from now?
There is one, that if any adjoining parcel pulls any permit, at that time, the undergrounding will take in place. Here's that trigger point.
And the applicant's okay with that?
Yes. And just to clarify too, the eight-acre parcel that's in the parcel map has utility lines going across it. If you underground only the two acres, you will still remain with the other poles on the other six acres. So as a permit for the neighboring parcel moves forward, then the entire parcel map would be undergrounded, which makes complete sense of undergrounding everything at once.
Yeah, I followed that through the planning commission discussion and everything else on that, so I just, my only concern was how long we're holding this money before it's actually used.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment that this is some great creative outside-the-box thinking to move this project forward. The community has been demanding this project, it's anxious to see this project move forward. I'm glad we've been able to resolve all of the issues, and I just wanted to say that the undergrounding utility piece of it, I remember back being, when it first came before us, and I asked the same question, the applicant wanted to move forward with it, but seeing the cost at the end, and I don't want to have that cost hanging this project up, so I think it's some fantastic outside-the-box forward thinking on behalf of our staff to come up with this, and so I just wanted to thank you for that, and I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I know the community will too.
Now, nobody else in the queue? Intertain a motion?
Motion to approve, according to staff's recommendations, all of them.
There's a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is a resolution of intent to vacate Ortega Drive. Mr. Porus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is regarding a resolution of intent to vacate Ortega Drive. A street vacation is a complete or partial abandonment or termination of a public right to use a street. What does that mean? We currently use a street, we're gonna abandon it and use that lot for future development. The city staff received a request from property owner for the city to vacate Ortega Drive. Ortega Drive is located south of hacienda Avenue between Alisell Road and Awakayendo Road, and is shown in exhibit one. It is currently a public road and public right-of-way. During staff's inspections, we found that the road at one point in time was blocked off with fencing on both sides and has not been maintained over several years at least. Based on the overgrown reeds and debris that are found in the streets, those photos are also shown in your exhibits. The purpose of the street vacation is to privatize that portion of Ortega Drive and the future use that Ortega Drive for future development, for any type of development that's actually needed. Ortega Drive aligns from east to west. It's approximately 480 feet in length and 50 feet in width. The property owner on the north and the south have submitted a request, and we have evaluated it, and it is not blocking any type of access or any type of easements along that road. Therefore, staff is recommending that city council adopt a resolution of intent, which is shown in exhibit three, declaring it as tend to vacate Ortega Drive in the city of Desert Hot Springs, which would set a time and date and place for the city council's public hearing of December 3, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the Carl May Center, and refer this matter to planning commission for consideration of general plan consistency. The process to vacate a street is a six-step process. Today, we are approving, or the city council would be, if approved, would be adopting a resolution to vacate a street, and will set a hearing for city council to consider the vacation. The second step would be the city clerk will notice the public hearing. The third step, the city engineer will post the notice on the street. The fourth would be the resolution of intent is adopted, and the planning commission will make a recommendation for city council that is set for November 12. The fifth, the city council will conduct a public hearing on December 3. And the sixth step would be the street would be vacated, after the street vacation is completed, the city clerk will certify a copy of the resolution, and we submit it for the office of the Riverside County Recorder's for recording. So it is a lengthy process, but today we are only doing the resolution of intent to set a public hearing date of December 3, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. That concludes my staff report. Glad to answer any questions.
Any public comments?
Well, as some of you know, I have been working.
Maria, state your name first.
Oh, sorry, my name is Maria.
Not everybody knows you on TV land.
I'm sorry. Oh, my name is Maria Lys, and I'm the one that has asked for the vacation. Odd name for it. As some of you know, I've been working very hard to bring a property to Desert Hot Springs that will draw visitors from everywhere to experience our hot springs. And I think it's something that we're gonna be very proud of. I don't want to say too much about that right now because I'm not yet the owner of that property. I am in Escrow to purchase the CJ Grand and the lots south of the CJ. We're scheduled to close Escrow on the 18th. I have already purchased, there's two little lots that, in that pie that another owner had, I have already just closed Escrow on those last week. In order for me to successfully complete this purchase of the hotel and the lots, I need to have direct access from the hotel to the lots, and there is, of course, the street in between. The street has been fenced off and abandoned for at least 15 years that I know of. It's covered with weeds. It has essentially been abandoned. It has just not formally been vacated. Now I'm in the position of, if this formality is not completed, I can't close Escrow. And if I don't close Escrow by the end of the year, then I have a host of other complications that develop, serious complications. As, you know, I'm sitting here looking at this picture of the spring, and the reason I sold that beautiful property is, even though I loved it, was because it was not large enough to have the impact that I wanted it to have. Because I know that this city can be the geothermal center of California, and I know that the right property can bring over hundreds and hundreds of people to the city. And that property has the potential to achieve that someday. It's gonna take a lot of work. I don't have a lot of money. It's gonna take a ton of effort to, and it's gonna build over the years, but it has the potential to have the significant impact and to enable Desert Hot Springs to grab its share of the tourist dollars that are in the valley. And I look forward to working with everyone towards that goal and succeeding.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Very exciting. Any other public comments? All right, we'll move to council member comments. Mr. Bets?
Well, certainly wonderful news to have you re-engaged in the city this spring. It's been a beautiful property, and so this is really wonderful news. Looking at the question before us is, do we have any need for that street? And I can't see that we have any better need than to do what you want to do with this property. I don't think anything's hurt, and so our question here is just basically giving our blessing to going ahead with this process. And I'm almost afraid to ask because I know how beautiful. And I'm almost afraid to ask because I know how beautiful the spring is and how, what attention you pay to detail, but there's curbs that bend in and ugly gates, and your intention is to get rid of all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm sure the neighbors who have been living across the street from that, looking at that must be upset, but they could probably be very happy that you're the person who's coming in here to fix that. So I would like, at some point in time, condition this to where, you know, those curbs get put back so it looks like there was never a street there at all, which I'm guessing you want to do anyhow, right?
I want to make it beautiful.
Okay, good. So I'm, I think this is wonderful, let's go ahead, we've got a nice project moving ahead in the city.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleague that this is a much-needed, much improved, big improvement on the Hill. I look at this project as the seed that is going to make that hillside blossom into something really spectacular, and will really bring a lot of good visitors to the city. And I'm anxious to see this project move forward as fast as we can. It's a totally useless street, there's nothing there, it's covered with weeds, it's blocked off with fences, and I see no reason at all why we don't move forward and vacate that street as soon as we can.
Is that a motion?
I moved it when you touched that. Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to make the motion. Oh, yeah, no. I'm going to make the motion. There was...
There is a motion, a second. Mr. Betts, are you back in the queue for a comment?
No, I'm not.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move back to public hearings. Item number eight, annexation number 35, the city of Desert Hot Springs, Community Facilities District number 2010-1, services for APN 665-030-051 located east of Little Morongo and south of 14th Avenue. Community Development Director... Is this our Community Development Director? I'm sorry, was that, I'm confused. You know, I thought you said you were taking, you're not taking that one. This is our Finance Director, Jeffrey Buckham.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this public, this is a public hearing following council approval of a resolution of intention to an annex territory that was approved on September 17th, 2019. The annexation will add a 1.07 acre property to the Community Facilities District number 2010-1. This property is owned by Linwood Hospitality, and they are developing a cannabis facility on the property. This special, by adding it to the district, it will add a, special taxes assessed on this will help provide funding for additional landscaping, maintenance, lighting, and drainage based on services costs. We have representatives from Webb Municipal Finance here for any additional questions.
Do I have any questions of staff from council? I see none. I'll open the public hearing at this time, I'll take public testimony, would anybody like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing at this time, city council discussion, any more questions for staff? See none, I will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution calling for an election.
I'll so moved.
Motion is made and seconded, please vote. At this time, we'll hold the election and canvass the election.
The property has voted in favor.
I'm sorry, could you say it a little louder?
The property has voted in favor of the annexation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll adopt a resolution declaring the election results for the annexation to the CFD 2010-1. Would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion is second on the table, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, move on. Item number nine, annexation number 36, the city of Desert Hot Springs, Community Facilities District number 2010-1, services for APN 665-030-052 located east of Little Morongo Road and south of 14th Avenue. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, so this is the adjacent property also to the previous item, also owned by the same property owners, and so it's basically going, the same thing being an annex into the Community Facilities District for maintenance, lighting, costs like that.
Any questions of staff of this item? I see nobody in the queue. I'll open the public hearing at this time, we'll take public testimony. No one's coming forth, we'll close the public hearing. Any more questions for staff? I see none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution calling for the election. There is a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, at this time, we'll hold the election and canvass the election.
The property owner has voted in favor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution declaring the election results. Need to clear the screen. There we go. There is a motion, a second, any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move to item number 10, an ordinance amending chapter 17.108, home occupancy permits of Title 17 zoning of Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to adopt regulations for microenterprising and home kitchen operations. Community Development Director, Rick Beckett Demme.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. On October 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval to city council this ordinance. Chapter 17.108 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regulates home occupation permits. The California passed an Assembly Bill AB 626, which took effect this year, and it regulates the microenterprise kitchen. So we are proposing to update our code to be in compliance with that requirement, as well as clean up a few other pieces that you'll see in the resolution through the redline version. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So we have staff report. We obviously got some music going on out there. Entertain questions of staff from the city council. Mr. Betts?
We covered this today, but get into this briefly. So what this does is allow somebody in a residential neighborhood to basically turn their home into a restaurant, correct?
So this code, the state law already allows that through the Health and Safety Code, or through the Health Department permitting, which the AB does allow them to serve up to 30 meals per day in their home and a maximum of 60 meals per week. What this code does is add additional regulations in the areas we are allowed to regulate. But even if we did not adopt this, it would still go into effect by the state, and they would still be able to have a home kitchen and serve meals out of their home. That is correct.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is that we're not the ones who are creating this. This is Sacramento determining, you know, that residential property should be allowed to essentially set up their house like a restaurant, serving 30 meals a day out of their cars pulling up, customers showing up, up to 60 a day. What are we regulating specifically in this that the legislature is giving us the opportunity to adjust?
So we're regulating things like parking vehicles with advertisements in front of their house, so if they were advertising their business on their car, they would be required to park it in the garage, they would not be able to park it visible. We are regulating things such as the no signage and other items. It shows in the code that it's listed under 17.108.045, the different conditions that we are allowed to regulate.
And we did add, we did modify prohibited home occupation uses other than what the state legislature said we now must allow, right?
So in the cleanup, as I mentioned, there was a section that discussed different home occupations based on homeownership versus renters, so we removed that and clarified it under the allowable uses. We are allowed to regulate home occupation businesses other than like microenterprise kitchens, so there are special ones that are called out that we cannot regulate in addition. Another one is the cottage food permit, so as the state creates these regulations that override our code, we try and keep in the kind of uses we would like to see other than the ones that are exempt by state law.
And generally, we like to keep our commercial district, is commercial and residential districts is residential, but the legislature doesn't see it that way. It's only one I would add to this, it would be under, we have manufacturing, which would be nice not to have that in residential zone, but I think you could also get somebody setting up a warehouse and a warehouse distribution. If we could add under item I, manufacturing, warehouse, and/or warehouse and distribution, that would cover that, somebody can get quite a going Amazon distribution business going in a residential neighborhood, which could have considerable traffic that's not conducive to a quiet neighborhood. It would just be a simple change, I'd like to add, otherwise, I want to thank staff for doing this, and too bad we couldn't deal with AB 626, but we don't have a choice in that matter, I guess. Thank you.
I have nobody else in the queue. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, I'll take testimony in favor of this. No one standing, coming forth, I'll take testimony unopposed to this. See no one coming forth, I'll take testimony if anybody's in neutral position. See nobody coming forth, I will close the public hearing. Any more questions of staff? Mr. Betts, are you back in the queue?
For the purpose of making the motion.
Then at that point, there's no one else in the queue, please do.
Okay, make a motion to approve staff recommendation, but adding under item I, the words manufacturing, warehouse, and/or warehouse and distribution, to expand that category just a bit.
Is there a second? Second item for now, for discussion. Open it up for discussion before the vote. Is it necessary that we add those verbiage in there? Can you explain yourself again?
Somebody says manufacturing, it's a process of setting up warehouse and warehouse distribution. Imagine somebody wants, I want to go contract to set up with Amazon to start doing deliveries within the neighborhoods. So every package shows up in a truck, I'm preparing it, I'm sending it individually. You've got a warehouse operation in the middle of a residential neighborhood, it's pretty simple change. I'm not imagining that this is any big deal. It's just, I'm, somebody could have a very disruptive distribution business. A distribution business could look every bit as much like a warehouse of manufacturing, except for what's taking place inside. The manufacturing, what's upsetting is not what's taking place inside unless it's making noise, but it's the activity that's ancillary to that coming and going.
Yeah, I have no problem with the extra language. Any other comments? All right, with that, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is first reading of an ordinance of the city council amending chapter 17.108, home occupancy permits of Title 17 zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to adopt regulations for microenterprise home kitchen operations. As amended, the ordinance will return on November 19th for a second reading and adoption.
Move to item number 11, ordinance amending various chapters of Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code Title 15 Building and Construction to adopt it to 2019 edition of the various state and uniform codes. Ms. Demme?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The California Building Standards Codes is a compilation of building standards, including the California Building Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Electrical Code, Fire Code, and others. This is an update by the state of California on a triennial basis, and the 2019 edition of the Building Code has an effective date of January 1st, 2020. The Building Code applies throughout California. Currently, Title 15 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code adopts by reference a collection of various state and uniform codes, including the 2016 edition of the Building Code. In order to update Title 15 to adopt the 2019 edition of the Building Code, various chapters must be repealed, replaced, amended, and renumbered. Since Title 15 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code is currently outdated and contains codes that are no longer needed, the proposed ordinance will make a significant change to the contents and numbering within Title 15. The first proposed ordinance updates the Fire Code. Currently, chapter 15.24 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code adopts with amendments the 2016 California Fire Code. Staff has worked with the city's fire officials to develop this ordinance, the main purpose of which is to adopt the 2019 California Fire Code, subject to local amendments that are more stringent than the state-adopted standards. The city's fire officials are recommending certain amendments due to those specific area conditions. We have several representatives here from Cal Fire, Riverside County Fire Department tonight, and are available to answer any questions about this proposed code or the proposed amendments. The second proposed ordinance seeks to create substantial changes to Title 15 and to adopt it through the 2019 additions of the Building Code. The proposed amendments to the Building Code recommended by the city's building official only concern administrative matters, which do not require any express findings. We have the city's building official, Keith Hightower, here to answer any questions related to that specific section or the Building Code. In addition, the proposed ordinance adopts the International Property Maintenance Code. The International Property Maintenance Code provides additional standards that will be useful for the Code Compliance Division. We have Christina Archuleta here, our Code Compliance Manager, is available to answer any questions as it relates to that Code Compliance or the International Property Maintenance Code. The proposed amendment also amends chapter 4.08. This clarifies the authority to enforce the codes within chapter 15. So therefore, since 15 title is being overhauled, it is necessary to update the code references that are located within chapter 4.08. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Ms. Pye, you're in the queue?
I move forward.
I got to go through the public hearing before you move the item.
I'm sorry.
Is that what, you didn't have any questions?
No.
All right, any other questions? I don't see anybody in the queue. I'll open the public hearing at this time, I'll take any testimony in favor. Take any testimony opposed? I'll take any testimony in neutral position. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any more discussion before motions made? Ms. Pye?
I move forward.
All right, introduction read by title only, well, that's the discussion ordinance, okay, got it. Staff recommendation, there we go. And it's been seconded. Any other discussion?
Motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of two ordinances. The first ordinance is an ordinance of the city council amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to repeal chapter 15.24 and to add chapter 15.22 California Fire Code to adopt the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code with selected appendices. And the second ordinance is amending chapter 4.08 Enforcement Authority and adding and repealing, amending and renumbering various chapters of Title 15 Buildings and Construction of the Municipal Code in order to adopt by reference the 2019 additions of the California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historical Building Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, International Property Maintenance Code, and to adopt local revisions to those codes. Both ordinance will return on November 19th for second reading and adoption.
Good job, girl. That was a mouthful. All right, that ends our agenda tonight. Any future items can be discussed with city manager, anybody in the public that wanted to speak during public comments at the beginning of the meeting, we're not here. See nobody coming forth. Our next city council meeting will be on November 19th, Planning Commission on November 6th.